Follow the Northern City Council Work Session Order at six oh one. Please rise and applaud your leaders.
Actually, I believe it is.
It is a flag in the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice as well.
Glory local now we're at, or at regular.
Regularly. But he's present.
I appreciate that. Okay, so um thank you for an work session. Obviously, we all know this is about the mayor selection process. So we're gonna uh, anyone just turn it over to Emily. So I'll just um ask everybody to think about uh towards the latter half. Um if everybody could just give three minutes or less on attributes, not who, what attributes will be like to see him do new mayor. Hopefully, that will help us to come to more of a consensus. And now I'll turn Emily.
Okay, um it's so nice person with you all for the first time, so um good to see your faces. Hold the microphones up please.
Sorry about that.
Most actions. So um I'm just gonna run through um some of the process questions that I received since the last time we talked about this. So as I mentioned at the previous meeting, um there are actually a lot of options before you as long as you comply with the requirements of the code and charter. So I think that's where I'll start with the requirements of the code and charter. So the charter is kind of more broad. Um and section thirty-three requires that the vacancy is filled by appointment by a majority of the remaining council members. Then the um sort of more specifics are fleshed out in the municipal code. And section thirty-three thirty-seven is where that is. And um I guess I'll just read this sort of relevant portion. It says appointment. So well, let me take a step back. It requires that you post notice of the vacancy and then a two-week application period. So a minimum of a two-week application period. And then it uh requires in relevant part appointment from those applicants nominated and seconded consideration by members of the council. The recorder will announce the results of each ballot and will record each council member's ballot. An applicant who receives a majority of the votes by the current council members will be appointed to the vacant position. End quote. So from that, the requirements that I see are that the appointee be an applicant, someone who applies, that the applicant be nominated and seconded, that council votes by some form of ballot, which the recorder publicly announces, and then that a majority of current counselors vote for the appointee. So some of the questions that have arisen are whether council could use an alternative method. And I sent you an email earlier today, sort of running through options. I I heard a lot of, there were a lot of sort of different types of questions of alternative methods. And my um sort of interpretation of the requirements of the code and charter are that whether you use an alternative method, which I think you could use, you have to follow that process where um there are applications, the um applicant is nominated and seconded, a vote by a ballot, which is publicly announced, and then a majority of counselors vote for the appointee. So you can do, I guess, the way that I foresee uh uh alternative method working would be you'd you council obviously has to decide as a body, and you decide on the alternative method and decide to be bound by the results of the alternative method. And then, once you do that alternative method, whether it's a coin toss, or a high card, or rank choice voting, or some sort of polling of the community, or whatever you decide to do, you then essentially ratify that decision in that process laid out in code. Okay, um other questions I got that I wanted to address are that um are whether there's a deadline. And there is not a deadline. Um but the code does require, the code and charter requires an appointment. So there's no deadline named, I think, or in the process of in good faith, you know, implementing the requirements of the code and charter. So I I there's no set deadline, but I wouldn't sort of not do anything. Um, let me just look at my notes. So then there were questions about amending the charter. And amending the charter is a process, requires a process. It must go to the electors, the voters. Um so it has to be at a election, one of the four um state election dates. Um and so in order to amend the charter, to change the requirements for filling a vacancy in Charter Section Thirty-Three, council would essentially decide what process you want to propose to the voters in a charter amendment. And then you would uh pass, adopt a resolution that refers that question to the voters. There would then be um, you know, a series of notice uh requirements. Then there's a seven-day ballot title challenge period where anyone could challenge in circuit court. Those are essentially expedited, so in order that they don't delay too much. But that would add some time to the process. And then essentially, assuming there was no challenge, or if there was, that would, you know, add a few days. Then you'd, the city would file the measure with county elections. And so all of that takes at a minimum three months. So if you wanted to consider amending the charter, it wouldn't be for at least three months from now. As I started with, however, the charter has sort of the broad strokes, whereas the code is where the specific um requirements are fleshed out. So you could, the code is just, you know, you could adopt an ordinance amending how, what the code says. I think that the issue is that the language appointment by a majority of the remaining council members is in the charter. And so I don't really see getting around that. Um sort of, if you do an alternative process, if you amend the code, you still have to appoint by a majority of the council members. So so I I just think that, I don't know that you could um sort of change, amend the code to address that issue. Um and then lastly, for my like prepared presentation, um I did receive a few questions about whether you could vote on the previous applicants or had to reopen the application period. And at the last meeting, I um gave the advice that you should reopen the application process because it was my understanding that we were at a stalemate. Um and so I think that that was sort of council's consensus, but council can change their mind, I think, and decide if you want to try an alternative method with the previous applicants. There's nothing to stop you as long as council as a body agrees to do that. Um and then you could vote on the, you know, use the alternative method decided, followed by the traditional method for the previous applicants. But if you were to do that, I would just make sure that they are still interested and like sort of ensure that they still want to be applicants. Um, so I think that's all of my prepared remarks, and I can answer questions if people have them. Or you can, I can stop time.
Um, I just have a quick question, just as a hypothetical, so I can make sure I'm understanding it. And by, and by doing a hypothetical, so um let's say we agree to uh to go with the previous candidates, and we'd agree that we're going to use a message like drawing cards if it's a stalemate. That we come back in and we vote again, and it's a stalemate, that we then go to the card, which we agreed upon. However, following that to meet the pool of the charter, we would, and we had agreed that that we would go by that. Following that, between the will of the charter, we would vote again to make sure that we have the majority, which theoretically, since we agreed to do that, we would have the six votes to move that forward. Is that the hypothetical correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I like the idea of the cards. We can make a mystic, mystic with the cards. I do like the cards. I think that the uh, we shouldn't use what we had before. Maybe somebody else knew we want to run. They're, they had it, this is a stalemate. And people may have been disenchanted by the process that were canceled, being locked up, and now want to run again. So I am very much okay with the beginning of stalemate. After the next round, we let the cards aside. However, the cards would be for the people that are too, out of all the candidates. All the candidates took a draw card, just to matter of consideration and causes it to tie.
Um can you explain again how the ranked choice option would work?
The same way you had before, it is going to be a tie.
Can you pull the microphone up?
Thank you.
Hello. I I also noticed Emily in your email that you uh discussed our rank of choice. And can you elaborate on that again, please? Thank you.
So I'm not an expert in ranked choice voting. Um you, I think that there are a few different ways to achieve ranked choice voting. Um I don't know if Bill, you know.
I can, yeah, yeah, sorry. I worked on this for the state a little bit, so um for the campaign. So basically, what ranked choice voting is, and let's assume we have four candidates. Everybody, your first candidate gets four points, second candidate gets three, two and one. And it just creates a statistical model that you can basically, at that point, if it
Add them all up?
Yeah, basically, you just add them all up. And then if there's no winner, then, you know, you go to the second one, and so on and so forth. So the, it it creates a challenge be- because we could still go to statistical tide. There's a high likelihood based on, around all the numbers to see what happened, because I'm a nerd. There's a high likelihood that we'd end up in a statistical tide just based on a lot of assumptions. And we would probably, there there's a high likelihood that this is going to end up, have to go back to Emily to make sure that we follow the rules on this, because it's not super clear. The stuff the state was trying to do got very murky. Um and Portland has tried this, and it's, it's been a mess. I I will just say that first, that's my personal opinion. Ranked choice voting has a lot of things that could go wrong. I'm not sure how to say that.
Well, and I have one, so it's my understanding, and I would do more research to bring this, if that was what the council wanted to explore. But it's my understanding that with ranked choice voting, the only time those rankings come into play is if there is essentially not a majority. And so then ranked choice, i- it's my, the way I interpret your charter, a majority, I mean, I guess it's not even the way I interpret it. The uh, it's required that a majority of the council members appoint. So even if you use ranked choice voting, it would only, you would only look to those numbers assigned to each ranking if a majority does not agree. And so even if you use ranked choice voting, you'd still have to then, which is an option that you might consider, but you'd still have to then do the traditional method afterwards to ratify that decision.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Comments?
No, John, the card seems pretty straightforward. You've done it in the past. It's not the best way, like to have us with a good consensus, but I think that uh we had three people nominated, and um I don't see, I can see that there's this book in here, so we're not going to get that. So I think the uh cards will aside.
I think the challenge that I would have with the cards is um
He says hi.
Because I can't count. The challenge with the cards is, um in my, my opinion, is it's not reflective of the election process. So I understand it's legal. Um personally, I I don't think it's the but I don't, I don't think it would be the representative of what, what uh voters would want. So I
Voters had a clear second choice.
What's that?
The voters had a clear second choice, or we're not going where the voters wanted.
Well, we're going by the voters. Uh my opinion is that we should be looking at what the voter voted on. And so that's why I'm saying I don't think the card, I don't think looking at random chance is a great idea. I'm just, that's my opinion, throwing it out. Counselor?
Yeah, I just wanted to share that um we did come to stalemate three times in the same ways. And um, you know, it was clear that we were stopped at that point. And I do have some thoughts on that that I'd like to share, but not at this moment. However, we also talked about the candidates and the value that they brought. You know, there was a lot of talk about the equalities in terms of them as valuable candidates. In that case, I do feel like that we should be at a point in that final candidacy, in that final choice, if we are at a stalemate, to do something as simple as having draw cards and move forward as a council body to accept that and move forward, either way. And I realize it's not exactly a vote because of the people, or we're not going to get the exact vote of the people. We also can't get the vote of the people for now versus ten months ago, less than a month ago. So um just in my thoughts, it is an equitable way to move forward and something I think we as a council could agree on.
Anybody else? Counselor?
Can you elaborate on the risks of waiting for the next election cycle to um uh leverage that as an opportunity just to reflect the will of the people?
To non-facets?
Yes. So the risk is that the charter and code lay out the process for appointing, filling a vacancy. And so there's a risk, like right now, as I said, we're in good faith moving forward, trying to um achieve a majority in order to fulfill the requirements of the code and charter. And if, if, if you're not, there's a risk that someone could challenge that you are, that you, like the council as a body is not, is failing to perform its duties as required by the code and charter in filling a vacancy. So that's what I would say is the risk. But there's no deadline set either. There's no statutory requirement that someone be appointed within one month of the vacancy or something like that, so um it's hard to quantify the risk.
But as a council, I'd be part of benefits, not, you know, this is, sorry, non-facets. Benefits, this front of the, this, this is, this duty, right?
Counselor?
So I I want to go ahead and share something. Um I reflected a lot after our last meeting. I have to breathe constantly, so I'm going to go up and down, which I can hear it right now. That's all right, I should hear about it. So I left our special meeting to select the mayor saddened and very disappointed, and disappointed in myself and in the full council. Uh we as council members were selected to serve the city of North Plains and all of its community members as stewards, advocates, community builders, oversight providers, and strategic vision thinkers, as well as decision makers. Unfortunately, the selection process and our decision-making on the sixteenth failed. Not because of the candidates, and not only because we disagreed and found ourselves in a stalemate. We found ourselves operating from polarized positions. And as such, I believe we needed to each move ourselves and to move collectively from the I want my choice and I'm not budging positions, which created a clear someone wins or loses situation and a contest of wills. It ended up with us firmly planted in division. We felt to recognize that and move ourselves beyond this division. As city counselors and leaders, we need to do the hard work to continue to move past this division, to work together toward a decision, to find a way to mutually agree to explore the issues. And a joint investigation will no doubt be complex, messy, and at times very challenging work. If NATO can do it, I think we can too. There's been talk among the council and the community that North Plains needs to heal its divide. I've heard that here more than once. If we as council members plant ourselves firmly in division and refuse adamantly to do the hard work it takes to get beyond it, we are poor example of leaders for the community, and instead we fully exemplify the division that is condemned.
You? Anybody else had a comments or questions for Emily? Okay, um you, who addressed the handle this question? You said, can we address the last part?
Yeah, no, I, you want me to?
I was just curious, because you put that in there, so I was
Yeah, that's Yeah, um so I was consulting with some of my colleagues about um, you know, the stalemate that we're in here. And um we were toying with an idea of, um, this is not legal advice, so take it with a grain of salt. But one possibility to potentially break the stalemate would be to reach a compromise that um someone, one of the counselors be appointed to, or apply, it has to be an applicant under your code, to apply for the mayoral vacancy. Um and then you could talk about, you know, what, I heard a lot of talk about already, what um sort of experience you were interested in a mayor candidate, so um that you could, you know, determine that that person met those requirements, and then appoint them, and then agree to appoint. Then obviously, that would create a new vacancy, a council member vacancy, and then you could agree to appoint a counselor that um maintains the um political uh makeup of the council as you had before. Um so that was just an idea, like I said, not legal advice, but we were trying to figure out if we could give you any advice on um potential options to consider.
Yeah, that's a pretty good idea from the very beginning, but uh, nobody wants it.
That's also a problem.
But that would have solved things pretty quickly, but yes, again.
Okay, so no more questions, no comments? All right, so um what I would like to then ask everybody is because I, this is not it is, we're not changing anybody's mind at this point. So what I would be interested in is if each one of you would share briefly, um what are the qualities? Because we keep hearing experience, we keep hearing all these things, but I I would be interested, I would be, hopefully, everybody's interested in this, in in understanding what things you're looking for the new mayor to bring to the table. Um so if we could start, would you mind, Counselor? David?
This is like a five-pound weight.
Just working out right there.
Yeah, yeah, um they, you know, it's, I I too have been through some reflecting, and it's, it's challenging because in a big mayor system, clearly, the mayor is not setting policy, they're merely a um, a steward or um really a facilitator, symbolic and collaborative, right? Um I I don't see that prior experience running a city as helpful. It's maybe a nice to have than a, than a must-have, because the, the decision-making is within the council body as a whole. Um and of course, in in North Plains too, having, being able to check all those boxes, I'm sure it's going to be a challenge as well too. But what I do remember is, as a part of the last election and the referendum, we heard from the city, it was very clear that they voted um for, for new faces, new ways of thinking, and they were comfortable with that. Um, you know, but um sitting that aside, I I do have some concerns that um the turmoil it would, that could potentially cause going against that direction. Um but, you know, we, we have a big job here to think through this. But I think um if I were to say, still have the quality or attribute, I think being a good steward of our resources would be really critical because um we're kind of at a crossroads of a tricky um economy, but also um local and um at state level, but also we have to think short-term and long-term. And so good stewards, good stewardship of our existing resources to me would be uh number one personally. Thank you.
Excellent.
Sure. Um, well, I was called old guard last time. I was in the old guard. I didn't know where that came from. Um I wasn't sure. I haven't been on council before, so you know, I
The old guard came from being before the last election. I'm going to come back. Um before being, you were
I, I wasn't, I didn't
Fair, but you were before the election, so
No, I was after the elections. I came in in December. So I was appointed in December, but regardless, so um in this period, this collegial joint investigation, and our selecting a mayor and seventh member of the council body, I heard we were looking for someone who could bring fresh ideas, innovative ideas, and work collaboratively with others to find them, who had government experience both in process and relationships, who would work closely and effectively with the city manager, who would work to better engage and improve the community, who would work collaboratively as the seventh major member of the decision-making council body, and facilitate our meetings for us to do so together, who is sensitive to the funding and tax-based issues in North Plains spaces, and will assist in seeking solutions, and someone who participates fully as the mayor of North Plains locally, regionally, and in the state. From my perspective, growth as options, yes or no, amount, type, et cetera, is certainly an area of concern in this community. That would not be carried by the mayor alone, but by all of us, through steady deliberation and input. In my tenth month of serving here, I have not heard a single counselor here speak in support of an eight-hundred-and-fifty-five-acre UGV expansion, or in bringing in data sensors, not once. And nor did any of the candidates apply any. So um I sincerely hope we can move this process forward together and 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 get beyond the division.
Thank you, Counselor.
When you told us, you know, to list some attributes, attributes, I quickly wrote down um new ideas and perspectives, decisions rooted in community, integrity and alignment with community need, trustworthy, collaborative leadership, transparency, reflects voices of the whole community, listens, is humble, has the time, is a good communicator or people person, and can bridge divides. And at the end of the day, North Plains deserves a mayor who will unify, not divide, who will put community first, not personal ambition, and who will honor the trust that residents place in them.
Thank you. So um I I'm sitting at the uh position here of trying not to try to figure out what the voters would vote for if they were to vote again. I do know that our last election, we were the laughing stock of the state. We had a, it was terrible. I would go to other cities and like, oh, how's that going over there? It was really embarrassing. That's why I figured, well, we need to have somebody knows how to, that knows the people in the city, that knows how things work, is part of a board, has spent some time doing this, and is kind of calm. You don't have somebody that's kind of bombastic up there, you know, just beyond the people. Um, those were the main things I was looking for, plus having the ability to spend the time to do it. Um, those were the main things. I didn't want to use this as an opportunity to lend somebody brand new, they didn't have the role. Because I have a duty to make the best decision I can. I can't crystal ball what an election would have had. If it did, the next guy up would have, would have been Russ, but I did not nominate him. I thought that there's somebody else that's calmer and a little further away would do, would do a better job. As far as, not, well, not doing a better job, but being like a calming uh calming factor to help everybody just get united. So that's what I was looking for, for this mayor. Um there's always, because that's the thing you can do for mayors, but trying to figure out, well, poor ran and wasn't going to hack it, or would get sick, or whatever happened, dropped out. Well, then we had to figure out who has the same ideology as them. I, I don't think that may be accurate anymore, because you did such a bad job earlier. So with my decision-making ability, I mean, how do you just go with somebody that has, that I thought was the most qualified currently? And that's somebody that can grow into it. That's what I thought of. And that's somebody that can grow into it, that's what I thought of.
I think, also, based on.
You know, hard going last sometimes because I went to all the great ideas. Um, but, you know, as I was reflecting as well, um, just some bullet points about qualities in a mayor that I'm looking for are steadfast leadership. Someone to represent North Plains and we can be proud of. Someone who can build consensus inside and outside of North Plains and advocate for North Plains can build back resident trust and reputation. A visionary and can take swift action and make up for lost time.
All right, thank you. Um, I think the thing that I will say, uh, that the city, I would like to see the most from, uh, a mayor, whoever it is, is uh, somebody that is going to bring some, uh, unity to the city, uh, and somebody who's going to bring some perspective, um, I think that, you know, that there's been a couple of elections now where we've kind of seen where the voters want to go. And agree or disagree, that's what we've seen, so I think that, um, we need some, I, I would like to see somebody that's going to be able to, uh, try to take that and can work with it. Um, what that means, I have no idea because I'm not the mayor, I'm not applying to the. But I think that's something that we need to work together on, and we need somebody who's going to be able to bring all that together, so I would say, you know, collaboration and it is kind of, I guess, my thing for it, somebody that's going to, um, unify the council and unify the city. Um, because it's a very public-based, so I think the thing, the main things I took away was, let's see, collaboration, experience, creation, uh, calm, uh, trustworthy, visionary, steadfast leadership. So I think we have a lot of good qualities there. Um, that's about all I have. For that, I just wondered if everybody could kind of talk about the attributes, so looking forward to see if there's things that are similar, and it seems like there's a lot of similarities, so.
Can I take your hand?
Please do.
Uh, Bill, since you're going to be the person that's first mostly with the mayor a lot, what kind of person are you looking for that would help facilitate, where, where you want to go, what are you looking for?
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Page, um, you know, I, I think whoever you pick, um, that, somebody that has the time for all the meetings with me, um, you know, all the meetings all the time, that's a, that's a big thing from my perspective, so.
Good point, yes, Counselor?
Yeah, there is a lot of meetings, and, uh, I think that's part of the impact for all of us looking at that as a position. Um, what I want to share, something that just popped into my head as people were talking, you know, that we, we want a lot of great things, and I think those are really important, and I think we want those out of all of us as well, um. But there's also some assumptions that, well, if you don't have experience, then you can't win either, you haven't done that, or you have to have the experience, but then you don't have new and innovative ideas, so just wanted to flip that on the other side, you know, we can't assume that someone who, um, has been involved with the boards and commissions and government and et cetera, doesn't have experience, that, that doesn't have innovative ideas or isn't creative and vice versa. You know, but we have to kind of recognize that doing it on both sides, kind of flipping it back and forth, and so, um, I think it's important not to make those assumptions about, um, the candidates without, you know, just based on, you know, who they knew before or that sort of thing, um, because it's, the city voted for a new council and this is the new council. So regardless of who ends up on here as mayor, this is the new council and hopefully we'll be doing the work of a new council soon.
And just a point of clarification, um, just people are all four candidates or candidates, applicants, not, sorry, um, have served on a, a or multiple boards or commissions, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody's clear on that, um, some less as council and some as budget parks and others, so just keep that in mind. That's not a plus or minus, I'm just sharing with you a fact. So there's something to consider. All right, what else? We got twenty-five, twenty minutes. Or we can just sit here and throw.
I can just talk about what process we want to do so we can move it forward.
I'm open to conversation, Card was brought up. There was one for and one opposed, so. Do you like more discussion on that, or do you have a different one that you prefer?
In order to stop the, uh, stalemates, I do think that Jordan Highcard, who faces a B nine, um, would be the, uh, would be the appropriate way to go. Um, and that is be that if we retire two people, those two would drop cars, not everybody that puts an application in, it has a chance. Just be the, uh, the last two, because that's. I think they would only have, well, I'd actually come a three-way tie, so there's three people out there.
Certainly, yeah.
Technically, as we were, most likely would be that too. The issue is rather, we don't enjoy the high card, there's enough high cards in that to, uh, to handle the world.
Before we would do that, I mean, we would go back to the original applicants, um, and again, for that, we would, um, I would take the vote first, again, to sort of see where we are.
Well, we would, we would open up the application process, we would kill the last, it's done. Now it's finished, you want to apply again, maybe.
Well, that's.
Somebody, yes, so my, my idea would be to maybe have, maybe somebody says, I don't want to do this anymore, I'm, I'm out. Or maybe somebody said, no, this is pretty much a gridlock. I was not just stepping in, but maybe I did get a chance, maybe we'll get some different people in there, that's, that's the idea.
Any other comments, thoughts?
Why don't we take those one by one? Should we open up the process to new candidates? Or new applicants?
Let's discuss the whole process first.
And anybody else? Found some process, Counselor?
Um.
Sorry, yes, you, in the green shirt.
I am in favor of opening it, uh, the process up to, um, new candidates, I assume that if prior candidates were still interested, they could roll, re- reapply as well at that time.
Yeah, there would be nothing preventing them from reapplying. Any comments? I'm sorry, you were wanting to talk about the process, the high card or just the process overall?
The high, oh, the process of raw, like.
Yeah.
Um. Having the high card, let's see if it's something different. To do it, maybe you have a final round of questions or, I think, I don't, I think, or last time we did this, after the second round, I understood that we wouldn't go anywhere. So I don't think further rounds of questioning would actually help, maybe we'd ask new questions, but, um, I, I do think we need to do it and have it set up where we know the defendant lady, in case there was a tie, it's going to be.
Yeah, I think we don't have a tie, well, by any, if we don't have a way of breaking the statistical tie, then
there's a point.
there's probably no other point, because we're just going, I don't want to go through this process again and end up in the same vote, so that would be my suggestion.
So, I would say if we're going to open the applications again, then we open the applications, but then we also have a set of questions because if we get new applicants, they haven't answered any questions, and then from there, we go through the same process, take the nominations, see who comes forward, if we get caught in a stalemate, we do the deliberation, if we don't, we get caught in a stalemate again, we can choose to at that point either open nominations or go to the, go to the card draw and select a person from that, and then from there do a final vote to make sure that we have, uh, majority for that, for whoever drew the highest card.
So you're suggesting two rounds of stalemates and then go to the high card?
Yeah, I think there should be some deliberation in the middle.
Well, again, I mean, we don't have consensus on high card, so we're saying that that is one option.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I would say I echo Council McCall Wallace's idea, I think deliberation, first of all, opening it up again, and then also, um, asking around the questions, again, if we have new applicants, going through the nominations, deliberation, I think, you know, finding that finite number of is it three rounds, is it two rounds, and then we draw a card or flip a coin, whatever that might be, um, would be my, my preference I'm leaning towards.
Good, it's Counselor.
Do we know what other cities have in their charters for something like this, just to reflect on?
I, I, I do know that, um, the city, the city that I know came from before did have the card draw for tires in that situation. So, uh, when there's a tie for a candidate and coming into office, those sort of things, it's still on the card draw as well. Um, and so it's, it's because it's that close, I like the idea, I personally like the idea of the card over the coin flip because it adds a little personal faith to the, to the, to the action of the person drawing the card, and, and that's just a personal thing that I like about that. Um, but there are places that do that, it's a card draw, and I think there have been some at the state level that have that.
There are places that do, card draws will.
But, you know, I, I've been in a lot of, um, interviewing candidates for jobs situations and, um, and, and having my supporters also interviewing their candidate and being on those panels, and I think that when you get to that point, when you're at the point when you have two candidates and you're kind of locked in there, you know, there's not really a wrong choice, it's not the only choice, and I think that's important for us to remember, is that that all of these people can bring different ones of these things to, that we talked about, to the situation, um, there is not an absolute uh, that we were like, oh, no, if there was, they're not going to end up in the, in the, in the ranking, they're not going to end up in the nomination process. We saw that the other day, so, um, I think that it's kind of recognizing at that point, it's sort of going with the process rather than, um, feeling that we have to control it to the end, and I don't think we have time to, you know, put out the charter change in what would be May, I guess, because we're not, can't get it on the November vote, so that would be May, and then we would have to put a mayor one out in following that, which would be November, so, you know, that's a long time for us to operate without a mayor who's not fully participating on the regional, local and state level, as well as just in terms of the city relationships, et cetera, so I personally would like to see us make a decision to solve this problem together, moving it forward.
Any other comments?
I, I do have one more comment, uh, when we, we, we have a lot of things that we disagree on in council here, and we vote on them. And sometimes, you know, quorum wise or outvoted, but it's a decision we made together. And as a council, and a full body council, and as counselors following that, we carry that decision forward, regardless of what side we're on that decision in the end. And I feel like we're kind of in that situation here, there's a lot of weight being put on it, there were threats put on it in terms of people being recalled. I don't think you need to worry about being recalled, I, you know, if that happens, you know, there's certainly other voices in this community against that or before that, they're, they're sort of like, you can't do this, don't do that, um. And in a very odd way, so, you know, we haven't had that with every decision that's come before council, um, but we did, we did with this one, and it was a little bit surprising, so, you know, I think we have to trust that we as a council are making a decision together through this process.
You have anybody else? For once? Twice? All right, Emily, any closing comments, thoughts or advice?
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Um, so, obviously, we do, we don't make decisions in work sessions, so if somebody wants to bring this up during regular session, uh, we can put it on the agenda or we can bring it up in council comments, um, I'd encourage everybody on, no matter what you're, um, you know, no matter who, who you think would be the best candidate to really take a hard look at this and think about what's best for the city, um, including myself, I put a lot of thought into this too, um, and think about, is this something that, you know, where there's room for compromise or not, and everybody's going to have to make their own decision on what they believe and whatever the council decides, we're just going to have to work, find a way to work together, so I would just encourage you all though to think about this, um, you know, one of the things that kept coming up was, um, basically, you know, collaboration, so whether we get through this process or not, is make sure that we as a council continue to collaborate. Um, whether we agree or not, we should be able to work together again, get the city's business done, which I believe we have done for the last nine months, it hasn't been perfect, but we've gotten quite a bit done. Um, and we'll continue to do so, uh, while we get through this, as well, soon enough. So with that, um, if there's no further comments, we'll be in recess until seven o'clock. From our plain city council meeting quarter at seven o'clock. Uh, we're even the pledge of allegiance, so, uh, Laurie, would you give us a roll of this ball?
Thank you. Counselor Dumbrow.
Present.
Counselor Fage.
Here.
Counselor Hagedorn.
Present.
Counselor McCall Wallace.
Here.
Counselor Payton.
Present.
Counselor Ready.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie, and, uh, now I will entertain a motion on the approval of the September fifteenth and September sixteen minutes, uh, Counselor Reddick.
Before we approve the minutes, I just want to note a small concern about how public comments were listed. Some were identified as residents, some as non-residents or by city name, but one labeled non-resident actually has a nine seven one three three zip code the same as North Plains, I completely understand the intent to show who lives within city limits. But I think we should be careful that our language doesn't unintentionally sound divisive or exclude those who still consider themselves part of the North Plains community. Maybe instead of non-resident, we could use something like North Plains area resident outside city limits, which is long, or rural resident, it's both accurate and more inclusive, creating a welcoming tone for everyone who takes the time to engage with the city.
Okay, um, we can take that up under council reports. Anybody want to close on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the present agenda. I'll second.
Okay, moving seconded, and just to clarify, you're moving for vote, thank you. Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, uh, I will, um, sorry, calls in favor of approving the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, motion carries. Uh, now we'll move on to public comment, so you will have three minutes and please state whether you are a, uh, in the city or outside the city.
That's a pretty good one, Rob.
Yes, Counselor.
I'd like to add an item, an agenda item.
Oh, sorry, that was my mistake, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Um, I'd like to add an agenda item, um, to determine the mayor selection process and tie-breaking mechanism, moving the process forward.
Okay, there. Uh, there's a motion for addition, agenda addition, with any heads or second.
Seven, eleven B?
Uh, we'll put it there, but we need to make the.
I'll second.
We did that, okay, thank you. Um, moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, um, so Laurie, can you add that as eleven B, please?
I will.
And we'll give you a second, because.
Yeah.
I was just messing up.
Oh, yes, new business, correct.
Oh, sorry, actually, it's a new business.
Yeah, I, that's, I just want to make sure that's where.
Yes, that's, that's what I meant.
That's.
Perfect, okay, anything else? Thank you for catching that, Counselor. Um, okay, now we'll move on, so please, um, come up when you're called, uh, three minutes, and whether you're in or outside the city, so we'll start with Don Weber.
Okay.
Any timer?
Okay, good. Uh, Don Weber, inside the city of North Plains. Uh, just a couple of things I wanted to address, I want to talk a little bit about the RA, but first. Uh, just a couple of things I wanted to address. I want to talk a little bit about the RA, but first, uh. I was a candidate for mayor and I attended the work session. I would say from my perspective of a ca- as a candidate, uh, the ideal is that candidates would be elected by a vote of the people. I don't think the charter allows that. So to me, the second thing is to be elected by a vote of the council. Uh, to me, it's it's kind of embarrassing, the idea that there might be a coin flipper or card draw. I just don't think there's any integrity in that position. I don't think that's the intent of the charter was to ever do that. Uh, I talked to several people who mentioned the coin flip idea on Facebook and they said they thought it was a funny joke. So that's just from a perspective of a person that may choose to apply again. The other problem you would have is some of the candidates might refuse to participate in the card draw, which I think would be kind of embarrassing. So. Uh, one opinion is to not go that way and just encourage you to keep talking and try to figure out who you want. Uh, I'm a big fan of the Urban Renewal Agency, the RA. We've been a part of that for nineteen and a half years almost. I just want to encourage there to be a little more action with the Urban Renewal Agency. I realize. We're limited on staff, we're limited on the time the council has, but there's, uh, it's a wonderful, uh. A way to give money to things. There's millions of dollars currently in the fund. I was looking at the last budget and I was surprised that, uh, there was a million dollars set aside for downtown. Uh, projects and only fourteen hundred dollars was spent. Uh, or no, four thousand was spent. So we let left nine hundred ninety-six thousand dollars that was in a cash fund not spent. You know, and then it concerns me here. It's sad that, uh, Bertoni, the wine guy, Abbey Creek Winery is pulling out. You know, did we go aggressively to help those kind of businesses? Uh, so I'm just concerned about the lack of action. And I realize people are busy, but it's a wonderful thing where we could give out lots and lots of grants and we just haven't. Been active for whatever reason. There's a wonderful. Two sisters who are trying to start an antique emporium. I looked in the previous budget, there was three hundred thousand dollars for property improvement grants. For some reason, she was told she couldn't get one and she was told there wasn't even an application for people like her. And only half of the three hundred thousand was spent. So again, I think we could also, uh, help fund the improvements to Jesse May. Hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I just encourage more action. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Chris Evans.
Thank you. Uh, Chris Evans, I'm a manager organizer for the Eastside Property Owners. I think I've listed them plenty, but would be happy to do that. I'm a resident of West Lynn, uh, but I appreciated councillor Rettings' comments. Um, that, you know, those five property owners, um, are also area residents. Um, in fact, the Van Dahmlin property is across the street from the new city administration building. Um, so I wanted to talk a little bit about the process and where you guys are at. It's interesting to hear about this idea of drawing lots, Oregon's constitution says now.
To say they are from North Plains.
Decide electoral ties. Um, and I want to take you back to eighteen forty-five on the banks of the Lamm River. Uh, when Asa Lovejoy of Boston and Francis Pettigrove of Portland, Maine were arguing over what to name their city. They couldn't decide. Ultimately, they flipped a coin and we know how that story ended. So. It's very noble, very honorable to settle your disputes that way, and I think it would be setting a good message to the city. Um, so I know you can also carry that same spirit of compromise and working together. As we move forward with the eight hundred pound gorilla, uh, in this conversation, which is how to make smart plans for the city's future. Uh, we would just ask that landowners who are absolutely primary stakeholders. Under Oregon land use law, rules, and best practices. That would be included at every step of the way. And that would include the concept planning. Or discussions about what the city's intents would be in terms of use, um, on those properties. Um, I thank you for that and and good luck. And I know that you guys are going to be get through this.
Thank you. Next up is Chastity Wilson.
Hello, President Dumbrow, city counselors. My name is Chastity Wilson. I live within the city of North Plains. And tonight I'm representing Strong Towns, North Plains. We have members within the city. And in the rural communities as well. Um, on Thursday, September twenty-fifth, we hosted a public meeting for. The city of North Plains and about forty-nine people showed up. And I thank those people for showing an interest in their community. Um. We had a questionnaire. There were ten questionnaires for the forty-nine participants. And tonight I'm going to read, uh, some of the comments from that questionnaire. The first question was on UGB expansion, whether, uh, people thought we should go forward with. The current plans or if there should be more engagement. Sixty-six percent said no, and the comments are, we should do better planning within UGB. And thirty-three percent said, yes, we should go forward. And the comments were for recreational, single-family housing, retail, farmers markets. Um, there were no votes for heavy industry, high-tech, light industrial, or mixed housing. The next question was on grocery store. Eighty percent want a grocery store and the comments were. Small town market, local produce, medium-sized, small-scale, fresh foods, non-chain. On what commercial offerings are missing in North Plains, nearly every group mentioned these types of additions. An upscale restaurant, family-friendly dining, a wine shop with tasting and seating. A hardware store or farm store, farmer's market, and bike ride off, bike rider offerings. On recreational facilities, um, two people mentioned a skate park. One group mentioned a multi-sport park. Three mentioned aquatic center. Two mentioned Friday night movies. Um, one mentioned a larger park. One group mentioned cornhole tournaments. One group mentioned putt-putt golf course. And one group mentioned motor truck. And then two groups said nothing more is needed in North Plains. Um, on more housing when needed, uh, six groups said single-family housing. Two groups said condos. One group also favored retail below the condos. Um, one group said multiplex rather than just condos. Um, one group said apartments. Two groups said low income and two groups said no opinion. On the question, is there enough to do in North Plains? Two groups had no response. Six groups said no, two groups said yes.
Chastity, that's, that's, thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you to everybody that came out and provided their voice. And we can, together, we can be a great community. Thank you.
All right, Emily Waldron is our final in person.
Hi, my name is Emily Waldron. I am not a city resident, but I am a nine seven one three three resident. Um, and before I get in on my public comment to you all, I just want to let Chris and his clients know. If they would like to sell and save farmland, I know a lot of farmers that can't pay as much as a tax company if they get rezoned. But they would love to buy it and keep it farmland and keep that cultural thing here. Um, I am speaking today for myself and I actually am also speaking for Strong Towns. Because what I want to talk about took a lot of us to research over the weekend, and that is the Urban Renewal Agency. Uh, after last week at Week's Economic Development Committee, we decided that we wanted to know more about the structure of how our town is. Approaching the urban renewal and what we're doing. And to be honest, there's a lot of really concerning things. Once you start digging, um, the first is that for the Urban Renewal Association, there has not been any financials or audits submitted since twenty twenty-one. Which tracks with where the city is on our audits. Um, under, and at the time, the audits fell into the purview of then finance manager Bill Reed. Um, our meetings only take place a handful of times a year, with six meetings happening since January first of twenty twenty-three. Which is surprising because the Urban Renewal Agency has been dumping a ton of money into the general fund. And I cannot figure out when that was approved by the Urban Renewal Agency. Uh, from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-five, earlier this year, the end of the year. Um, over seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars was transferred from the Urban Renewal Committee to the General Fund. Uh, twenty twenty-three to twenty-five accounts for over half of that, and that's in six meetings that it happened. Um, now more than five hundred and thirty-three thousand is being budgeted to transfer for this fiscal year to twenty twenty-seven. And there's no record of what, who's approving that transfer and what's happening with that money. Any budget report that is in the minutes that was given to the URA just kind of says a general like money out, money in. Interest or whatever, but it doesn't actually say what that money's being spent on. And the Urban Renewal Agency money is technically a separate entity and a separate fund from the city. The only reason why that money could be being transferred if it was paying city staff to do work for the urban renewal. Which is in theory to remove blight, but if we were spending almost a million dollars to remove blight. Wouldn't downtown look a lot nicer than it currently does? That's a lot of money to spend on staff time, let alone any other spending for the Urban Renewal Agency. Um, further, there's a change in the scope, so urban renewal agencies are meant to address blight. That's why we got the money. Our urban renewal agency money has only been going towards new food and business operations. And a lot of those, some of those business operations have now started to close. And there's no record after they get fifty thousand dollars of how they're spending their money. And how they're continuing to contribute to our community and what support the Urban Renewal Agency is giving them to succeed in their business. Because if we're giving a fifty K and then closing, that's not work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and last, uh, Aaron Nichols, if you can come up, you.
All right. Good evening, council. Good evening, council president. Um, I was, my, my name is Aaron Nichols. I live at eleven thousand Northwest Jackson Corey Road, Hillsborough, Oregon, nine seven one two four, about a mile from the city. Um, I was hoping to talk to you today a little bit about, uh, the TGM and and say thank you. Um, I'm. I'm very appreciative that it appears we're heading towards some more public meetings about how the money is to be used and how. UGB expansion is to happen in the city. And I appreciate both that the meetings are are going to be in the grant and that it's being. And that they're being added in a public and accountable way. I think that's really a wonderful step in the ri- in the right direction towards. Um, helping find a good path forward on on UGB issues. Um. I, and I'm sure my group would be very happy to help with turnout for those meetings, um, or if there's a way the city would like to partner with us. Um, we would, we would certainly be willing to do that, uh, for the purpose of bringing people to to meetings like this. So I I really appreciate that. And I wanted to say that first. Um, I do think there's like some other steps that need to be done, but for the, for the meetings to feel both legitimate and for residents to believe they're being listened to. Um. And, you know, this is a first step and that's great. We, I think there are some further ones need to be done. Um, and I think. Most importantly, the city needs to come into the sessions with the the fewest number of kind of preconceived notions or or old studies. Um, that that is possible. Um, and the worry I have with the other part of the agenda item, the DLCD, uh, grant. Is that it's kind of cutting against the this building trust and and openness that that asking for more public meetings do. Um, one of the par- the second paragraph, I believe, in in the letter that council is being asked to sign and support says. That the grant will start, uh, will will be used to start operationalizing the the EOA and HNA. I don't believe that's the word that's used, but that's the meaning. Um, which would, uh, it kind of makes me wonder who the city plans to listen to in these in these meetings. Um, I looked at the old relook data, um, from the survey, which is available on the on the relooks webpage on the city's webpage. Um, and over sixty percent of the respondents said they didn't want the city to expand at all. Um, that's. You know, within the range of what what I've seen in a lot of other surveys, when I found when I was door knocking, forty to sixty, I'd say. Um, and of those who answered the question of how much the city should expand, I think most said less than a hundred acres. And so I wonder if those people are going to feel listened to if at the same time the city's adding these meetings, it's also. Saying that we're working in in, you know, in in one at Luba, we're working to get an HNA that's over a hundred and sixty acres right there. Um, and make that into a mandate. And we're also going to look, seek grants and stop time to. To operationalize a a data-centered DOA and a and an HNA that's bigger than most people want the city to expand when when other options are available. Um, and so I guess I'm saying I'm I'm really hopeful, we seem to be moving toward a UGB process that's more based on listening. Um, and I I'm hopeful this year will be able to drop those preconceived notions and studies, um, just long enough to hear what residents have to say. It doesn't mean that if you got rid of, just. You know, don't, don't. Sorry, don't move forward, don't make them, um, irrevocable before before the listening happens. Um, and so to to do that tonight, I think stripping that paragraph from the letter. Of support for the DLCD grant, the second paragraph there that that mentions the HNA or the the. Centers on HNA and EOA, uh, would be would be a really important step. Um. I think also remove, not trying to have the HNA made into a mandate would be important. Um, and I think that would make it really clear the council plans to hear from its constituents and and not to dictate to them. And I think that's the the direction you're moving in, and I really, I really appreciate it. So thank you very much. Have a, have a good.
All right. And that includes our public comment portion. Um, next, we would like to invite Sheriff Massey up. Thank you for joining us. Give us the twenty twenty-four annual report update.
Thank you, thank you. Can I go back one? One chance. Even though, oh, go back one, or no?
We're trying.
Oh, no, you're good. Sorry.
I don't know.
If not, we'll just start here. Is this only the second slide?
We're trying to get rid of all the excess. Stuff.
Sorry about this.
Yeah.
Cheers. Okay, there you go.
That was good.
Yes.
For anyone that's in the room or online, if you would like to scan that QR code or go to WCSO annualreport.com. You can download a copy of our annual report. Figure out better, just put it out there while we're here.
We should, we should be giving that. Another which?
Yeah, you can go next slide if you want. Wow, it just doesn't want to cooperate at all. If it doesn't want to, I'm just happy. Oh, look at that. Look at that. Worked good. Love this. So, thank you, uh, council for having us this evening. One of the things I wanted to, um. Just level set with everyone is just a reminder that, um. The Washington County Sheriff's Office serves everyone in Washington County, no matter where you live. Um, so we manage the only jail in the county. We do provide countywide services to all six hundred and fifteen-ish thousand community members. And we are the primary first responders to our urban, unincorporated rural areas and our contract cities. Um, throughout Washington County, Cornelius, North Plains. Thank you for your service. Um, Banks, Gaston, and, uh, my goal, our goal is to be the safest urban county in the state of Oregon. Um, I want to talk a little bit about our Washington County Jail because. Uh, what a lot of people don't realize is normally our jailhouse is five hundred and seventy-two adults in custody. When it is fully functioning, that's how many beds we occupy. Um. Since first sometime, and I think the last time I was here, I talked a little bit about how we had three housing units closed because we were so short-staffed. Um, over the course of the last year, we have increased our staffing. We're about a year ahead of what we thought we would be fully staffed. However, fun fact, we still have three housing units closed. That is because the county dedicated a significant amount of resources. To critical facility infrastructure repairs. So we are currently in the process of getting an entirely new roof. HVAC system. Hot and cold water piping and fire suppression systems throughout our entire law enforcement center in downtown Hillsborough. So that will be in work until around the end of twenty twenty-six. So we fixed our staffing issues and now. We are actually going to provide a safe and secure environment for our adults in custody and the staff that dedicate so much of their time. One of the things that I would love to share with you is we just finished a, what we are calling a jail capacity study. We hired an outside vendor to come in, Matrix Consulting, and review. Our anticipated population growth and our needs at the Washington, in the Washington County. For what we anticipate needing in jail beds through twenty fifty-five. That number came close to a thousand. And so the real work begins on what that would look like, whether or not we maintain our current footprint and build up. Or we have some other expansion options. So stay tuned because jail expansion is going to be a hot topic over the next five years or so. We are currently, when we are fully functioning, the second smallest jail per capita in the state. Despite being the second largest county. So with three housing units closed, we are by far the smallest jail per capita. And we are barely making, making do. One of the things we have done is we've partnered with the Anheal County to house some of our sentenced adults in custody, those people who don't have to go back and forth to court. And it's not a hardship for their family to come visit. And we have received a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to expand our pre-trial release program. What that will do is it will take our electronic monitoring. And remove it from our outside vendor. Who was not monitoring people out of custody twenty-four hours a day and seven days a week. They weren't monitoring on the weekends and they weren't monitoring overnight. This will shock you uncertain, but crime happens on the weekends and overnight. So we are going to, we are buying all of our own equipment. We're bringing in in-house and we're going to have our jail deputies. Monitoring those adults in custody who are out on pre-trial release or sentenced. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, so that if there is someone in a restricted zone, we can send response straight away. So really excited about that. I think that will help us manage our adult custody population much more efficiently. Next slide please.
I'm going to address some of our inner H C teams and, and some of their responsibilities. No single agency can provide the services and our community needs to stay safe. By pulling on resources and expertise, we provide a consistent and professional service across the county. Our agency teams ensure residents receive the same level of response and support no matter where the incident occurs. Our partnership strength strengthens our collective ability to protect and serve. Our partnership with the city of North Plains has been great. Having our deputies and Chief Jones here serving the city has been very beneficial. By joining forces, the whole county benefits for a more reliable and effective public safety. Our crisis negotiation team and technical negotiation team expand the ability to peacefully resolve high-risk and complex incidents. Our mental health response team is particularly valuable in supporting individuals experiencing mental health, mental illness and crisis. These teams are trained, equipped and ready to respond countywide to the most challenging safety situations. Next slide please. Our community violence reduction team. The sheriff's office has secured the grant funding. To install a Niven terminal and Niven stands for National Integrated Ballistic Information Network. This technology analyzes case showcases to connect shootings to specific firearms. This provides critical leads, making crimes together and strengthening both investigations and prosecutions. Those violence trends are paired with convention, with prevention and outreach, ensuring. That we respond to both immediate and immediate threats and long-term risk factors. Our community reduction, violence reduction team covert was established in October of twenty twenty-four. I'm sorry, yeah, two thousand twenty-four. To address rising gang activity, criminal networks and gang violence. These numbers that you see here have, were updated as of today. The actual numbers for search warrants has increased to eighty-three. Our arrests are, has increased to fifty-one. There was an error in our firearm seizure where our count was. The error was made where we double counted one of the seizures. There are actually two hundred and twenty-three firearms seized, not two hundred and eighty-two. The strong focus is remaining, removing illegal firearms, supporting victims of violence. Redirecting at-risk individuals away from criminal activity and building trust through outreach and community engagement. Next slide please. The sheriff's office also manages the search and rescue cadet program. These are highly trained team, team abuse volunteers between the ages of fourteen and seventeen. They complete a twelve-day search and rescue academy each June prepared, to prepare for real, real world missions. The cadets meet Oregon search and rescue level-three certification standards. Where they can remain in a specific environment up to twelve hours. There's four levels of certification. They, they are skilled in both urban and rural rescue operations. They responded an average of forty-eight missions per year across Washington County communities. Locating missing individuals from children to elderly loved ones, hikers and hunters. Saving lives and providing closure for families. Searching for downed aircraft and emergency beacons, processing criminal crime scenes and conducting grid searches. For evidence when required. They're trained and collaborate with other search and rescue teams across the region. The cadets are always supervised by a full-time Washington County search and rescue staff member while on missions. And building leadership skills and confidence in our cadets. Often our cadets grow to, into law, future law enforcement officers, community leaders and first responders. Next slide please.
And I'm sure that many of you know, but. This is our space that we do our search and rescue banquet every year. And so for me, I just want to take an opportunity to say thank you because. You are always so gracious and it's, it's really a big deal for these kids to be celebrated and acknowledged for the extraordinary work that they're doing. They are serving in a more selfless fashion than frankly I ever thought of when I was that age.
Project Lifesaver and Help Me Home are two projects that are. That are overseen by our search and rescue program. Project Lifesaver is an active tracking system uses, using a radio frequency bracelet to quickly locate missing vulnerable individuals. Help Me Home is a database of photos and information accessible to all Washington County law enforcement, but there's no active tracking system. Currently, we have twenty-two participants in Project Lifesaver and a hundred and one participants in Help Me Home. The cost for Project Lifesaver is around three hundred dollars. It's a seventy-five dollar quarterly fee for maintenance, battery replacement and equipment support. And to, so a total startup would be three hundred and seventy-five dollars per person. And it is ongoing seventy-five dollars every quarter. The Help Me Home is a free program. The article at the top is a recent search and rescue mission. Where it highlights an elderly male with severe mental decline was missing. He was actually missing two hours longer than he was originally reported. He luckily enough had one of the Project Lifesaver bracelets on. One of our search and rescue staff members were able to deploy to the scene quickly. And they were able to locate him down a thirty-foot ravine. Where you can see that there, the red, the cadets and the staff members helped. Get him to safety where the paramedics were able to provide any medical care to. Next slide please. Our remote operating vehicle team. This enhances law enforcement and law enforcement safety through advanced drones and robotic technology. Providing real-world intelligence, aerial surveillance and situational awareness during critical incidents. It reduces the risk of first, first responders, including our K nine partners. Supplying accurate unseen information to rapidly decision, for rapid decision-making. They've flown over five hundred missions in two thousand twenty-four with twenty-five drones in service. They also do crash reconstruction, aerial diagrams. They support our tactical negotiation units, our search and rescue and K nine operations. Currently, the team is comprised of eleven Washington County deputies, three Beaverton officers. One Hillsborough officer and we're always open to expanding our partnership with other agencies. All of our pilots are F A A licensed and recertified thirty-two years. They have ongoing professional training up to ten hours monthly per pilot. All of them are certified across multiple drone platforms to, including tactical rescue indoor and weather challenging missions. And we also adhere to straight Oregon law and F A A regulations for governing drone usage. And to ensure transparency, transparency and lawful operation to maintain community trust. Next slide please. If we can get the video, should be a video attached to this. There it is.
There we go.
Yeah, look at that.
So this is a, a actual situation where we were looking for some individuals. And our drone is obviously in the air and is watching these individuals try to hide in the. Forest area there. And this allows us to just sit back and watch and. Vector out deputies in safely. And as you can see, they're slowly walking out to give up here shortly. And with the thermal imaging, we can see regardless if it's day or nighttime. This is another one where we were trying to locate some individuals. For whatever reason, they did not want to talk to us at the time, so they went off. And as you can, as they'll come around this next house here, you'll, you'll see they'll start moving really fast. Well, they jumped on a bicycle that wasn't there and took off, so that's. And as you can see, we can direct officers in to where they're going, just based on the, the footage from the drone. We can direct them in safely. And bring them into custody. This is a, one of our tactical drones where we break out the window and fly the drone and looking for a suspected suspect. This would allow us to remain safe, our K nine partners to remain safe as well before we enter an unknown situation.
Is it joined?
No, we physically break the window and then allow the drone flying. Next slide please.
All right, so on the horizon. You've probably all heard about this. I'm not going to miss an opportunity to talk about the fact that my entire life over the last couple of months, I've done the public safety local option levy. It will be on the ballot November fourth and that covers sixteen percent of. The sheriff's office budget, community corrections, juvenile services and the district attorney's office. Covering everything from enforcement to jail operations. Essentially, it's a sixty-six cent per thousand dollar of assessed value. That equates, it is an increase, so it's a nineteen cent increase, equates to about six dollars a month more for an average assessed value in Washington County. It also does contribute money toward the Family Justice Center, what will be the Family Peace Center. Here in next month and that is. Quite possibly one of the most extraordinary programs, one of the first of its kind in the country. Not to mention the most comprehensive of its kind in the state. That provides victim services, mental health counseling, actual physical doctors for physical exams. Carers Northwest to do forensic interviews for children who have been. Victimized and deputies and district attorneys so that. Domestic violence survivors and victims can do basically one-stop shopping instead of. Having one thing done and then being told to go somewhere else and somewhere else and then somewhere else. And so I'm really excited about that. And so it really is holistic, but. It is essential to the services that we provide and. For the sheriff's office specifically, it equates to about a hundred and eleven positions or ninety-nine currently filled. Employees of the sheriff's office. And it's effective July of twenty twenty-six. So if, if it were not to pass, we would go back out in May, but we are not going. We're not going to do that. Not happening. Next slide. And that is sort of the state of the sheriff's office. What questions can I answer for you?
Counselor. Anybody comments, questions?
I just have a comment to say thank you and also that, you know, I think the city of North Plains is. Well aware of the services that we receive and are proud of that and definitely support. The sheriff department, both in our community and the city and through Texas and the county. So thank you, thank you.
So the decision was made a few years ago to go to the county to, to contract. I think it's a great decision. Not only did we get a chance to have our deputies and women in road planes. Police officers be able to join yours and have, have, have a better. Or experience as you guys offer so much more than we, than we could. It's also cheaper. So our city's won twice, so thanks for that.
Well, thank you for your partnership because I really want you to know that we are part of the city. And you're a part of us.
Anybody else? All right, I'll just say, we really like deputies that we have and we'd like to hang on to them, so don't take them anymore. Chief Jones has been great and, and the others. And it's a lot of fun getting to hang out at events and whatnot, but, so we're very grateful for them and for the partnership. Also, I'll just say a quick comment on the. Search and rescue program, so I. A long time ago, when I was young, I, I started out in Springfield Police Department as an explorer at sixteen. And that led me into federal law enforcement for a great period. And then my son, my oldest son was actually a search and rescue. He's almost thirty, so it's a long time ago. And it was awesome. I actually got to go watch him graduate at Juul and it was such a good program. I mean, it, it, sorry, not what, it's, I, I can't say enough good stuff about, and I have a lot of friends there, so. But I, I think we have one of the best sheriff's offices in the state. So I, I'm just very thankful and proud because so many of my friends and my family have been involved in different ways. So thank you so much. We do appreciate it. We do understand the. The challenges that the sheriff's office face, but we just want to say thanks because it's not a fun job all the time.
Thank you. It, it's actually pretty fantastic. Let's be very clear. I worked at a different sheriff's office and we are. We're doing well.
Oh, yes.
Like my first sheriff is in federal prison for context, so not here.
Much, much better than.
Yeah.
Well, thank, thank you again. And yes, we, we're very grateful and thankful for the presentation and we look forward to working with you in coming years.
Awesome. Well, please know that there's no time limit on the questions, so if you think of things later, don't hesitate to reach out, shoot an email, I will respond. Okay.
Thank you so much, Sheriff. Great. Next is resolutions. So this is going to be resolution. Oh, I'm sorry, please.
My wife is landing from Rome. So I don't have to pick her up, I get to do it. Just, just now. So I'm going to be taken off and driven to the airport. Oh, that is you want some guys chairs. Thanks.
Thank you, sorry. But thank you for being with us as much as you could. Okay, so, yeah, so resolution, I'm just going to read this real quick, I'll turn it to Bill or Rowan, whoever wants to take this. But twenty-three twenty on the O dot T G M plan grant. Bill or Rowan, who am I going to say first? Sorry.
That's the number I can, I can take it.
Okay, I have no problem doing that, yeah.
Thank you, counselor. So. The resolution before you, you, your staff report or the staff report in the packet kind of gets into the details, so I won't, won't get into them here, but. City council had a, a work session about the O dot T G M grant that we have for U G B concept planning. And a lot of discussion occurred and a lot of discussion centered around the nature of the public outreach and talking to the public. And not just about what do you think about vanilla? You, you can have vanilla or you can have vanilla. The, the, the conversation was around. Let's do things a bit differently with public outreach than scoped if we can. The con- the the conversation was around, um let's do things a bit differently with public outreach than scoped if we can and go out and talk to people um and 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 kind of, you know, talk to people. So um staff met and visited with O dot about what was um, you know, possible, well, how could we change the scope of work regarding public outreach? And the suggestion um from O dot staff was well, um you haven't, doesn't look like we've done any neighborhood meetings or any neighborhood meetings or scoped. That can certainly be a way to get out there and talk to people in a way that um I don't think it's been done in a little while anyway. So the suggestion was um in the in the budget for the project, there's um there's money in contingency funds to do a variety of different public outreach tasks. And the scope of work can be changed slightly with city council adoption of a resolution, and that's consistent with the requirement of the contract with O dot. That releases those contingency funds to do that particular type of public outreach um that is scoped. And in this case, the funds can be used to uh for a change scope of work, so rather than one of the big community meetings, um the money be spent on going out to maybe meet with HOAs, maybe to meet with, you know, uh at the library for in the in the older part of town. And just kind of get out there and and talk, you know, retail, so to speak, with individuals about growth and the potential for a U G B expansion and all that um kind of conversation at a at a kind of more micro level rather than a big workshop. So the resolution before you, if you all choose to adopt it, um would simply let O dot know, um please use the contingency funds to do neighborhood meetings. Um instead of the first big community meeting that's in the scope of work for the grant. Um and and that's basically what the resolution would authorize if approved by city council. So I stand for questions.
Uh so I just want to make one clear point, question, and I'll ask everybody. Um I think what I heard you say is this is more of a to go out to different neighborhoods to get more localized feedback than bring, okay, I just want to clarify, I heard that correct.
Yes.
At our previous discussion in the work sessions, we did talk about having more public meetings and having an opportunity for public to weigh in. We also talked about that this was not a defined, although the grant was written in twenty twenty two and defined it as the eight hundred fifty five acre U G B expansion, this does not necessarily have a line. And in fact, these meetings could help us form what is that concept and what does that look like uh in terms of growth? And so uh I just want to clarify that that is the case. Then we have the original contract, and then they're bending the amount um to be able to add neighborhood meetings in, uh but there is not a sense that it is a definitive U G B line anywhere, correct?
Counselor McCall, that's correct, so um all of what you said is correct. The grant, when it was, when we have, when the city applied for the grant way back when, I believe twenty twenty two, there was a specific idea and a specific you know, path for how the U G B was likely going to be expanded by ordinance. That is all changed. Um and O dot has um made it clear in in communication with staff as well as communication with others that the grant, um the shift, there's a shift in focus of the grant money and um exploring U G B expansion rather than planning towards a very specific one, specifically the U G B expansion um that was planned previously. The grant can explore different types of expansion or growth ideas, so no, there's no all of this is not in service of the previous incarnation of U G B expansion.
I have one more quick. Uh and I believe it was Council Hagedorn who asked about the um impact financially to the city prior, and it was noted that um it is basically just staff time that we're giving that this cost is being borne by O dot, correct?
That's correct, um all of the expense for this, um all the expense, the money being spent is money that O dot has. And staff just shows up and helps with meetings and that sort of thing, but the city does not spend money on this.
Any other questions, comments? They have not have overtaken a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty three twenty authorizing the O, authorizing O dot T G and U G B concept planning grant contingency task C nine. So to authorize the uh the contingency task C nine.
There is a motion, uh I have seconded.
I will second.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded, uh is there any discussion? Oh, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to add that, you know, one of the things we really have been asking for, I've been hearing the community asked for, and I think Erin Nichols spoke to that tonight as well, is the uh is the community input piece to add in more community conversation and really go out and talk to people. So neighborhoods, looking at, you know, North Plains is not all one thing, we have businesses groups and we have uh the senior groups. And there are the older neighborhoods and the new neighborhoods, et cetera, so I think this is an opportunity to really take that to heart and and make those meetings possible and give that input.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I I'd like to say as a compliment to Bill and the city staff, um I like this concept of more um sorry, I just lost my, but basically going out in the community and having different meetings. Know what that's called, I just can't remember it now, but the concept of just having smaller meetings, being able to get more input and understand where everyone's coming from, so we can try to form a um maybe not a perfect consensus, but at least a little bit more unified vision going forward, so I I personally think it's, this is a good way to handle it, and I also like that there's impact, and it's already funded by O dot, so we don't have to worry about any craziness on that side. Anyone else, comments? All right, uh we'll go ahead and vote, so uh all those in favor of approving resolution twenty three twenty, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Can you do a roll call, please?
Sure. Counselor Hagedorn's.
Name.
Counselor McCall Wallace.
Hi.
Counselor Relling.
Name.
Counselor Payton.
Yay.
And I I vote aye. Long as she knows, that's, so uh motion carries. All right, so moving on to unfinished business, uh city services and funding process is scheduled, Bill, I'm gonna assume this is you?
It is, and I'm new, another presentation will pull up, so let me. Let's try this a bit. Okay, uh thank you, counsel, so I wanted tonight to begin the process of talking to you all about um looking out, looking forward regarding planning process for two things. A, um going out and talking to the public and seeing about what kinds of additional services they would like, they would value, but particularly with an emphasis on talking to the public about law enforcement services, um additional patrols or what have you. This slide here, information on the screen, is just a reminder to you all that during the budget process, we identified room for, in the second year of the biennium, we identified room for the addition of a one F T E Washington County Sheriff's Office Patrol Officer, uh you know, the fourth F T E would be the fourth F T E for the city. But, you know, but because of a variety of things changing regarding funding um from the county and growth in tax revenue for us, it it would need to happen in the second year unless a a funding source were to have be found sooner. But ultimately, the charge from the Budget Committee to City Council was you know, please find a sustainable funding source for a new officer. If the community valued having a new officer hired. Public safety enhancement is one of the pillars of the of city council um since uh since January sixth, since um new swearing in of new members. And so we just, I just kind of wanted to go over a schedule to think about, you know, months ahead regarding, um you know, how you might, how we, how we might want to schedule or scope, thinking about that and going out, so we have, we need to do two things, we need to go out and talk to the public or have them come to us or go talk to them, and we need to just identify what the true, you know, a a good idea, what the desire is for um additional public safety, or for that matter, you know, parks and rec services, that sort of thing. But again, really, the foundation of the Budget Committee recommendations was regarding, you know, public safety, it is a bit more expensive than some of the other services that we pay for. And so go out and talk to folks and get a better idea and then figure out, okay, if we really do want to have another patrol officer or graduated, however, you know, the community determines that, we need to figure out how to pay for it. You know, how to enhance or augment resources in order to do that. There's two primary ways of doing that, uh one is a local option levy, that's the way many other cities pay for additional services, is a five year levy that voters get to choose to optionally have. That's one way of doing it, um a primary other way of doing it is is to um figure out how much of a a monthly fee on the water bill residents might want to have added to pay for the services that they said they were interested in adding, basically, those are the two primary ways that cities um, you know, uh look to additionally fund uh new services, including public safety. So on the screen before you is just a schedule, just to kind of frame, um you know, the most complicated you know, in time intensive and process intensive way of the two or is a local option one, so on this, and so on the calendar view is just simply, um what happens, what kind of timeframe is the city looking at? If it wants to get, if it were to, if it were to hear that it needs and then chooses to move forward with a lo- a local option levy? Let's just give you an idea of when um we would need to file uh a measure to go on the ballot when the election happens. And then when we would start receiving money from the county if the local option levy is um approved, voted for. So if you were to go, the next election um after this November is the May twenty twenty six election. And that is on um May nineteenth uh next year, if we were to go, if we were to go through a quick process to figure out what we need and file a ballot, we would need to get things filed, begin the process of filing in in February of twenty twenty six, so in just a few months. If voters approved a ballot measure on the nineteenth, then revenue would start flowing in in November um of twenty, excuse me, of twenty twenty six, of fiscal year twenty twenty seven. So the dollars where the dollar sign is on that blue line of the top line. If the city decided it wanted, it needed to do a more kind of robust series of conversations and really try to spend a bit more time figuring out what um what the public would like potentially funded with a local option levy. The next election after that is um is in November of twenty twenty six. And that would be, if we wanted to do that, if we determined that that was appropriate, we would need to file, uh begin the process in August of twenty twenty six. And filing and going through that process, and then the election would be in November of twenty twenty six. If voters approved the um the levy, the local option levy in November of twenty six, we wouldn't realize revenues actually until the following year because that would be after the county has determined the levy for um to done that current year. If it didn't pass, if it didn't pass, and if if you, if 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 the city tried in May of twenty twenty six and it didn't pass, if if there was another attempt in November of twenty twenty six and that didn't pass, and there was interest um in going again or what have you, any combination, the following election is May twenty twenty seven, we need to get things in that February, followed with a, you know, the election would be May eighteenth of twenty twenty seven. So kind of what it boils down to is if a local option levy is determined to be, and there's a process to go through, but if 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 we're talking about timeframes, we kind of have a short upcoming timeframe of the end goal might be a local option levy with the May twenty twenty six election. But if a more extended process to kind of go out and meet more with people and talk a bit more in an involved manner, then that could be done certainly in timed with um the November twenty twenty six election. So I'm not giving any preference here, it's just a matter of, that's kind of the timeframe we're dealing with. Now, I want to make clear, I'm I'm sharing the schedule just so you get a sense of when the most involved processes need to be thought about, and that's going through a local option levy process. Again, if you go through an outreach process and the public decides, yeah, we really do need another officer and we and we would like to pay for it, but we don't want it on our tax bill, and the water food drought would be the way that folks might want to, um that you might want to go through the process and consider.
Can we pause for a quick second?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Two slides.
Can you grab the mic, sorry?
Two slides, oh, and I think you gave a proposed timeline, was it June twenty twenty seven, you're kind of recommending we hit, we hit if we did a levy? Or no, the budget, if you can remind me, when we uh walked out of the budget committee, we kind of try, there was a recommendation for a general timeline um to target, was it summer of twenty twenty seven?
Well, the the timeline in the budget was formally identify some some sort of new resource stream to pay for things by the time the F Y twenty seven twenty nine biennium budget is, so by March of twenty twenty seven have some kind of path in place. Before then, better, but by then, something figured out um about what would, what would be happening. So basically, that could potentially include the November twenty twenty six election if a levy is is the path. It could also potentially include the May of twenty twenty seven election if a levy is in the path, what I will say about the sheriff's office is that they have in the past with our contract, when we've added any kind of service or considered adding patrol capability, they have worked with us on the timing of it. If the public, if you, if you were to go out for election or or take a while and really figure out how you want to do a water bill fee, if that's what you'd like to do, if the public identifies the need for these new costs. The the sheriff's office has worked with us on advancing labor, adding adding personnel and figuring out a way to back end to pay for it, knowing that the levy has been approved, or if a water fee is is likely going to, a water bill fee is likely going to happen, so they've been great partners with us in the past about not necessarily waiting for the money to come in before adding patrol, so we have the ability to work with them on you know, the assurance that um necessary funding will happen. They've been willing, and I'm positive they'd be willing to work with us on um adding staffing, not necessarily timed to when the new revenue stream comes in.
Thank you.
If that makes sense.
Oh, sorry, go on.
No, you're okay.
That's what I was gonna say.
So basically, this is just kind of a, really what this is meant is that is to begin the conversation about what the process looks like or can look like. And, you know, kind of how we would phase it in terms of, we would want to go out and talk to the public. Town halls, neighborhood meetings, polls, that sort of thing, those are, those are things that we can do, we would need to kind of figure out the cost of them, if we need some professional help to do it. You know, professional meeting facilitator or what have you, so the staff, you know, you may want staff involved in certain things, you may want somebody completely independent involved. But the bottom line, or it may be really driven by city councilors, I mean, or some combination. But this really just is meant to kind of frame what the scope of how we go out and talk to folks and and hear from them what that looks like, and then what that turns into. At some point, after we've heard from folks, if they say, oh, man, we really need this, then the recommendation would be um at least maybe earlier even, but at least at the end of that outreach process, you know, some sort of ad hoc committee on the topic be formed. And then kind of go through, and I would recommend a large one with a lot of people on it, because part of it is just getting a committee to hear everything and provide a recommendation, the other thing is to have a lot of champions for it, to go. Champions for it, to go out and be part of the process of talking to the community and um, having those conversations. Uh, to support the levy or what have, the, the water bill, whatever it is. So this is just generally an outline, um, of, you know, how, and looking at other processes. This actually is somewhat similar to the process that, um, I'm on the Hillsborough School District twenty twenty-six. Uh, bond, um, committee. Um, they're gonna go out for another bond, and it's very much a, a process to get a lot of people involved and, and invested. And, and getting information from and invested. So I just kinda wanted to give this to you, let you talk about it, hear what you think. Um, and see what we can do to kind of get things moving in a systematic manner for you. With some calendar schedules to pick them up.
I mean, I can make all the comments, but I was hoping you guys could have some input. Yes, please, council.
I like a good survey.
I know you do. I think we'll do. Yes, that's right, sorry.
I love this. I think this is a great thing to move forward with. I just wanna remind everybody, Robin at one point. Told me that it takes about two years to really educate your community about a levy. I don't know if that was specific to our small town or just in general. But that's something to also, like, think about. If we want this on the main ballot, we're all going to need to be involved, I think. Kind of my thought on that.
I was gonna ask if Council Payton and Bill would mind if there's any lessons learned from the last levy. Cause I know both of you were involved, and I don't wanna bring up painful memories, but I just wanna understand, so we. Have a plan of how to be successful, I guess would be my question.
I, I guess, Council Payton, feel free to go ahead with, with your, um. Memory, PTSD, whatever you wanna call it. But then I also kinda wanted to, um, to visit with, um, Council Reading about. And ask that, that two-year time frame, so.
Yeah, um, you know, maybe I have blocked out the memory, uh, perhaps, however. Um, you know, I think, I think public engagement is a huge, huge piece and an opportunity just for us as a city in general. And I would say, um, you know, I think. Really, we have as a, as a council, and this goes for all things, but especially for something like a local option levy or anything that's gonna increase. Cost to our constituents, we have to be champions of it and we have to be united and all giving the same messaging. And I think that was one of, if I, as I'm reflecting right now, um, I think that was something that sometimes. We can get into the weeds and outside influences can get into the weeds and the me- the messaging gets muddled, and so I think. If, you know, we move forward in, in any of these paths, we have to be crystal clear with our messaging and the intent. In that transparency piece. And one thing I, I did wanted to mention, and I'll, I'll pass it back over to Bill or to Council Reading. Um, and I think that's a really great point you mentioned about having. Those conversations and starting that dialogue two years in advance, right? Um, something I heard Council Reading mention, I. Was thinking, oh my goodness, like, how are we going to sustain? For the next two years and then see revenue in three or four years. Um, so I think that's something that, that sense of urgency is at the forefront of my mind. Um, if you wouldn't mind going back to that initial, that initial timeline. Um, one thing I, I was thinking about, um, and I really appreciate the visual here, thank you, Bill, um, is. You know, let's, let's shoot for the moon, and let's say we were able to, um, make, make a motion towards. The May twenty twenty-six ballot, um, even if that did not move forward. We would still be right back where we're, where we're at for the same timeline as far as funding for Plan B or Plan C. Um, so I needed some more time to reflect on this, but, um, but I just, I was looking at that and I said, well, why wouldn't we make? An effort to act with urgency and, and try to formulate a plan, potentially. Um, for the May, the May twenty twenty-six election. Um, again, I know that's a really quick timeline and, and then I was also thinking about how do we roll in community meetings, um, you know. Add the chili cook-off, which I know won't happen this month, but, um, the jingle and all of the community events we have coming up. And so I'm just trying to think how we can bring this to life with urgency.
Thank you, Council Payton, um, so, uh, Council Reading, very good memory about the two years that Robert brought up. Um, I think, I think, I think for a smaller city like ours. I don't think it would take two years. I mean, part of the two-year timeframe, a lot of cities that are bigger can poll. Language, like, there's a whole polling process that goes into it, that, um, you know, figuring out language, testing different language. Um, one of the lessons that I did learn, I remember from the stat, we had some statisticians, campaign consultants that, that have done a lot. Washington County Sheriff's Office over the years, and that is, what they said was. North Plains is so small that you, you can't get statistically significant polling, polling, if you want. Not the kind where you can really bang on it, like, change this word and then, you know, and then test the language sort of polling. Um, not that, we, there, we can't really do any polling that gives us like, like real. Really good idea of how best to do things in terms of language to go out. So I don't, I don't, you don't have all that time embedded for a city like North Plains, but I, I do think it would take a while. And one of the big, two big lessons from the previous campaign was, number one. We have a lot of people who are new to Oregon. And we have a lot of people who are completely unfamiliar with our property tax system, and we have a lot of people who live here. Who are great residents, pay their tax bill, but they've never really bothered to look at it. And so in the time game to talk about that, there was just a lot of misunderstanding. There's some really weird things, the way we mark property tax bills or report things like urban renewal and others that just. It ended up being a slog of just trying to be clear about those things, so that will take time to talk about. And then the second thing is, the previous levy, I think, tried to do too much, and there was a lot. That made that even more complicated to communicate. Um, I will say that, that one of the great things about working with Chief Jones here with City of North Plains is. He has a far more clear incremental idea about how to scale up public safety. Um, staffing and then patrol. And previously, when we did the levy, the plan, the plan was more about trying to buy entire shifts of people. Rather than try to scale it up more incrementally. Um, and so we can, we can approach it in a very, it's, it, we can approach it in a very different manner that doesn't. Do too much, kind of like you're nodding when I, you know, you like, yeah, you remember that. Um, we don't have to do it that way either. So that was a, that was a challenge for the last process too.
Council Baker, and then Council Pauls.
Uh, tapping into your guys' history, um, can you, uh, elaborate if we did any workshops, focus groups or. Polls to refine language before, and if so, how long do those processes take?
Um, great question, Council Hagerdon. No, there was, there was nothing done like that. They're just, it, it, the consultants said it, at, at. At the time, I think the population was known to be about three thousand thirty-one hundred, and they said. The best, for a population of that size, the best thing is just to go out and in-person, talk to people. And see if they're willing to talk and ask, you know, have dialogue at their home or whatever. Um, there were commu- there were, like, some city councils went out and talked to people, there was some championing of it and talking to, but there wasn't a. It just wasn't enough to poll, yeah, yeah.
You go to the next slide. So, one of the things that I noticed in here is that, um, we're kind of basing this idea on the levy and on the. Um, or water bill, or, you know, basically funding the police, um, under. Uh, the budget meetings we had, when we did not have the, really, the town halls or the neighborhood meetings, or the public input about. How people are feeling about public safety. Um, but I think there's another educational piece that needs to happen. And that is really how do your tax dollars fund your services and amenities in North Plains? You know, for people to understand that, for example, fifty percent of your tax dollars for North Plains fund the sheriff. Fund our police service. In addition, you pay more taxes to fund the county share. You know, so people are looking at that and sort of saying, here's this. Um, but we didn't ask that question. And in the resolution, and I went back to look at this, cause I've seen some things in the community, hearing some things. People were like, I don't know, I didn't know we have a police problem. Others are, oh, wait a minute, we need to figure this out, and why are we funding public works? Why are we funding public work staff instead of the police? Why are we, you know, buying a backup, even though we can't use the same money for the same things? Um, and realizing that in the resolution that we passed, they, there are eight priorities. Goals, sorry, hit goal. And of those, it says they are in no priority order, however, they were numbered. And that was number one on the list of numbers, but they are not in a priority order. So we have been working to kind of deal with all those goals. And the city is being questioned about that, as if the police is the one thing that we need, and yet we haven't even asked the community that question. And so I feel like we're getting ahead of ourselves to go have, to go work on a levy and put that out to the public. They might say, you know what, what we really want is something else, and you haven't asked us until now. So I think we need to do the bigger question of, here's how your tax dollars work, what do you want, what do you wanna spend them on? And have that conversation, and if it's police, great, we look at a water fee, or we look at the local option levies. We let people know this is how you pay for things, um, but then they say, you know what? We like everything the way it is. We don't want another sidewalk, we don't have another street light, we don't want anything. You know, and then they have to sort of say, well, you'll still want water ten years from now, so how you gonna pay for that? You know, we just have to have some of those bigger conversations about how it works. Um, rather than just us trying to carry that conversation in this room.
Yeah, so, um. I don't think that we have something, I don't think it's something we need to vote on. Um, I think what we need to do is take, take this away. And put some thought into how we want proceed. Um, I do agree we need to do some public engagement, uh, because it is. Because the Budget Committee did ask, you know, to put that in the, uh, better memo, we do need to, um. Decide how we're gonna handle that, I believe, so I think that's something that we should all be thinking about. And agreed, we do need more community engagement. Um, I'll just say from my perspective, I'm always gonna be opposed to fees. Um, I'm also opposed to taxes, but I understand that, you know, I stuck with them. But I would prefer the, if we're, if we do go down this path, I would prefer to present the levy. Um, but that's just my two cents for what it's worth. Um, I also, I agree, I like Bill's comment real quick, just to kind of. Throw that out there as well, working with Chief, um, Jones on incremental. Because he did talk about some things when I met with him that were interesting. Six months ago or whatever, about, you know, hey, it doesn't have to be this or this, it could be this graduated menu, which. In my opinion, I was not even considering running at the time of the last levy, but when the last levy came through. Felt to me as an observer, and I'm, this is not a criticism, this is just an observation. Um, it felt very big and unwieldy, if you will, if that makes sense, so. If we do need to go down this path, I like the graduated method, but that's just my input, um, so. I would ask everybody to really put some thought into this, and I think this probably needs to come up. Next session, yes, then we wanna talk a little more about something. I'd also like to get Council Page's inputs, I know he probably has some. And I don't like not getting everybody's input on things, if we can help there. So Bill, thank you, uh, the timeline's super helpful, makes it easier for us to, to visualize these things. Um, so let's add this to the next, um, let's just keep this on a business, if you would, please, if that's okay.
No, quite okay.
I wanna make sure that we don't let this die, we just need to figure out what to do. And agree, yes, more community engagement, so let's, let's talk, maybe that can be our next topic, is how we would be more community engaged, like, as a council.
Quick question, has, have you gotten your water bill this month yet?
Yes, I've stated.
Of the, 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 well, the October bill, the, the.
No, sorry, I just saw it, okay, sorry.
That's okay, um, the, that's okay, uh, that's actually great to hear, thank you very much.
Yes. I know, okay.
Yeah, it, it, when I started, just anecdotally, auto pay was fifteen. Maybe twenty percent of our customers, and now it's the opposite way.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's not quite exactly flipped, but it's, and but, it's, that's a wonderful thing. Um, people don't have to worry about the bill they're paying, and so, um, anyway, the City Manager Corner in the, in the newsletter, um, is. It's October, tax bills are coming, and thank you very much for funding you, you and your neighbor's services, and. There's a chart that kind of shows how we spend our money, our property tax money, there's a chart about what our tax rate is. And how it's only a part of, of how much they pay on their tax bill, and it's kind of the beginning, that's the beginning of it, so. Um, anyway, um, every, I think, yes, this will be coming up over and over again, so thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just remind everybody, um, this is a great conversation to have with your neighbors or your people you want them to live in the, um. Yeah, station, I was gonna say groceries for everything, or that would be a bad joke, sorry. Tuesday, yes, but seriously, this is, this is not something that has to just happen to council, like. It was pointed out to me by, uh, a previous council, a member of council that, um. Sometimes we have to go out and do the education, just ad hoc, and, and so, please feel free to do that, I, I could be better about this too, I'll try to do that as well, but. If you're talking to somebody and they ask, like, this is a great point to Bill's point, what about the water bills, and here's how your taxes work, guys. And give them a little civics lesson, we can all do that. Um, okay, so moving on, thank you again, Bill, appreciate that, um, so now we're gonna go to the Surety. Bond Account Access Investigation Update.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Council Delbro, okay, I, um, I. This is on the, this was put on the agenda because I have this expensive information. Um, it hasn't, it hasn't come in yet, um, actually, 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 actually reached out on Friday, uh, to Ping, you know, to kind of check on, see where the information is. Um, so I don't really have a ton new to say at this point, I'm gonna stop the screen. Anyway, yeah, not.
We just need to pen it until that, sorry, keep it on unfinished.
Um, I mean, if I know for a fact nothing's coming up for the next meeting, I'll just mention it in sitting. I truly thought something was going to be presented, so it'll be City Manager Report, if I know for a fact moving forward that it won't be ready yet, so.
Everybody good, no complaints? Thank you. Okay, uh, I'm gonna say we're gonna take a five-minute break. It, so let's try to be back by about eight twenty-five, and we'll continue on with new business, and please don't anybody let me forget eleven B. If I go past it, remind me, so we're in recess for five minutes. We're back in session, so next time we're new business, um, and DLC. DLC, the Technical Assistance Grant Application.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Uh, this evening, I'll be presenting a short presentation on staff's application for DLC technical assistance. Um, this is a grant-funded, uh, opportunity, next slide please. So the DLC technical assistance program is our state planning agencies. Uh, way of funding projects that are not otherwise funded under specialty grant programs, um, in each funding cycle. Um, the state funding cycle is biennial, and these projects, um, under technical assistance can be anything from. Compensated plan updates, code updates, master plans, concept plans. Pretty much any large planning project that is not covered under, uh, another grant that is a state priority. Um, for instance, right now, with the declared state housing, uh, crisis. DLC has a lot of the housing-specific grant dollars, so projects that are not housing. Um, might be more suited for technical assistance, next slide please. These are the priorities for this biennium's technical assistance program, um, right there at the top in bold is economic development. Uh, this priority has the ha- um, highest rank out of any of the priorities, everything below it has the same rank. Um, so these aren't listed in any sort of priority other than economic development is at the top as a statewide priority. Um, so otherwise, we have natural hazard and climate change resilience, local planning issue resolution, statewide planning goal compliance. Public facilities plans, comprehensive plans or code updates, um, cultural resource planning and environmental resource planning. Uh, next slide please. Uh, so staff is proposing a zoning and development code update, um, in line with the repeated requests we have heard from. Planning commission with increasing urgency as well as requests we have heard or concerns we've heard from this body. Regarding the effectiveness of the zoning and development code, uh, particularly when it comes to, uh. Land use applications for existing residents or smaller projects. Um, where our zoning and development code is currently insufficient. Uh, staff's proposing to focus on housing and commercial development standards, which are the areas we see the most concerns in. Uh, from planning commission, from applicants and from staff internally. Uh, the goals of the application are to improve housing choices and affordability. Um, to provide code clarity and objectivity in line with, uh, state requirements from HV two thousand and one. Now adopted into the ORSs, um, and to support smaller infill and redevelopment project success. Um, next slide, please. So this project, um, is on a, a pretty snappy timeline, uh, applications are due this week. Um, on Friday, and grantees will be noticed in the last few months of the year. Uh, expected to start projects in January, um, a project such as a code update would then move quickly into project kickoff. Um, move into community engagement in the spring and summer. And auditing the code for those housing and commercial development standards that need to be fixed in summer of twenty twenty-six. Uh, the project would then move into the actual recommendations report. Um, selecting which pathways are the highest priority and actually drafting that new code in summer and fall. And then winter of twenty-six, moving into January, February of twenty-seven would be, uh, when adoption would happen. Uh, next slide. Uh, the request tonight is in advance of our application that the city councils. Signed the provided letter of support for the city's application for DLC technical assistance. Um, and before I open to questions, I do want to address. Um, some previous concern regarding language in the letter. Referencing the housing needs analysis and the economic opportunities analysis. While these documents, um, identify the need for a deficiency in land for new development in them. They also identify opportunities within the existing city limits to enact efficiency measures. And to work with the land and the sites that we already have. And in those documents, they note that code needs to be changed in order to support that infill, that redevelopment. Adaptive reuse, all those strategies that make the most of the resource that we currently have. Um, this project working specifically with those housing standards, specifically with those commercial development standards. To optimize what we have along our Glencoe Road corridor, to optimize our downtown corridor. Um, to work with what we see in the older section of North Plains between North Avenue and Highway twenty-six. And make sure that those residential areas are developed in a way that makes sense for the city, that's effective for the city, that's providing those housing options that we. So desperately need. Um, so that, that's what we're looking to accomplish with this application. Um, and if you have any questions about the application at this point, I'm willing to hear them.
If there's any questions, comments, Council ready?
So I, I noticed the two were housing and commercial. I know industrial is a really big hot topic in our community. Why are we excluding that from that, this, and if we are, can planning commissions still work on it?
Yes, um, the DLC technical assistance program is a high demand resource. Um, and with a relatively small allocation, uh, it's for the entire state, um, and it's. Um, speaking with our DLC representative, it sounds like it will be divided this biennium. Uh, each region will get one to two projects, we're in the same region as Portland, Metro, Hillsborough. And our DLC representative has stated that she already knows of at least ten applications that will be submitted as well. Um, the average grant amount is about fifty thousand dollars, if we wanted to address housing, industrial, commercials. All of these sections which we do need addressed, we would be far and above that fifty thousand dollar mark. Um, addressing housing in this, there's potential to pull dollars from other programs, um, and our representative is. Very supportive of making that happen because housing is such a severe priority. Um, but we wanted to make sure that this application was right sized for the program and increase our competitiveness.
Is there another grant out there for, that industrial?
Um, at the moment, we're not aware of a program, but I'm always, my eyes peeled, um, code updates are priority. Um, and anywhere that we can make progress, we always try.
And then is mixed use going to be somewhere in this, the code that's being worked on? Sorry, mixed use?
Mixed use, uh, yes, the mixed use could be addressed with this program, um, because that's right at the intersection of housing, commercial development. Um, as well as being rooted really in a lot of the community vision and comprehensive plan documents. Related to livability and community vision, um, I think that would definitely be able to be addressed with this program.
Council, you're.
Um, two questions, some just a general comment, um. Uh, can you, can you, is your mic on?
Hello.
Okay. Um, I can't, so, uh, I think about six months ago, um, you presented a robust presentation. That kind of detailed all, you know, the state of the union as far as refer and code. Can you, um, like size or quantify proportionally? Um, how much of this, um, grant would be targeted addressing pre-existing old code versus new code? And can you also come a bar on how much engagement the council would have during the, the program process? In terms of, yeah, um. Or like, uh, updates on the milestones, understanding what the scope entails, et cetera, et cetera.
Absolutely, um, so this project would be focused on updating existing code. Um, not introducing new code, there may be some sections where new code needs to be introduced just because there's such a deficiency. Um, but this would be focused on working with what we have, building off of an existing framework rather than scraping and replacing. Um, with that said, community involvement and city council involvement will be a big part of this project. Um, as stated in the letter of support, um, city council's gonna be very involved. These projects are either, um, actually, this is a new feature of this biennium, uh, DLC can help us with, uh. Procuring a consultant from a selective pool. Or the more traditional way would be to have grant dollars dispersed to North Plains and then procure a consultant separately. And in either case, North Plains staff will be managing that consultant team, um, and then. Reporting back to city council on those milestones, so also be, um, there's an entire task that we've scoped. Dedicated to community engagement, including a public advisory committee and community meetings, um. City council, planning commission, economic development commission will all be included in those public engagement opportunities as well as providing additional support. Um, outside of those engagement opportunities, um, to make sure that this code is going in the direction that they wanna see it go.
Anybody else, questions, comments? I will say, um. Go back, just thinking, um. I like this because, oh, because, sorry, that's what it was, um, this was a big. Frustration, I'll say of mine is, and it's not just North Plains, like this is just building code in general, it's very, um, complex. Is a polite way to put it, and I know Rowan and I had a conversations about like, hey, you know, where, where, where do we take this? I talked to planning commission, just like trying to wrap my head around, like, how do we? Modernize our code and make it more business and, well, developer friendly for, for the sake of residents. Because it, it is, it is challenging, and it should be to a certain extent, but I think. Rowan has shared with me a couple of times that it, it's not the most up to date. And, and, and we, and I've talked with planning commission about that, and they agree, and they're trying to, but they're doing the best they can, but. In my opinion, this helps us to actually address the problem. And correct me if I'm wrong, this is basically just a code recommendation that then goes to planning commission and then comes to us. Like to change the code, right? That's basically all we're doing.
Yes, so the, the project is divided into five subtasks, um, starting with project management, ongoing subtasks throughout the, or. Ongoing tasks throughout the project period, um, and then beginning the project with community engagement to assess where the community is. Starting, uh, basic off of that community engagement. Then going into a code audit where the consultants provide professional opinion based on community background. Key issues to develop the areas of highest priority where the real concerns lie. Doing another ring, round of community engagement. Then drafting recommendations, another round of community engagement. And then moving towards the actual land use application process. So it's very much an iterative process to narrow down exactly what needs to be approached and then work on how to approach that update.
So is there any other questions or comments? If not, I'm just looking for, oh, sorry, counselor?
Just the final comment, um, this sounds promising, um, in the future, um, it would be great to see the final grant language. And how it's packaged up, of course, this has been a tight timeline, thank you.
So I'm just looking for consensus, correct? Lauren, consensus, okay, I'm just looking for consensus to sign this as a council, is anybody? Is everybody on board, is somebody disagree? Yes, counselor?
I mean, i- is there, so this is just a consensus, if, if something comes back and in the, in the, the grant paperwork. And it's kind of glaring or super concerning, is, will the council have the opportunity to? Uh, you know, read it, vet it, and or express a concern with this going?
Um, yes, I, I don't imagine a scenario in which DLC would want to marry this council to something that they didn't want to do. Uh, this collaborative process, we're going to be working, um, even in approval, as long as we're working towards the stated goals. Which is providing housing, providing affordability and options, um. I, I don't see a reason why DLC wouldn't wanna work with us on redefining scope of work as needed.
Council. Council, how you doing? Can you, can you give an example? Of what that might be? I'm kind of confused by the question, I guess.
And she answered my question.
So, what, what, I guess one part is that, um, as policymakers and as counselors. We're providing direction, and we're saying, yes. Please, this does meet our goals in terms of code, project, please go forward and put the grant in to do that. Uh, as opposed to reviewing grant application. And so I just wanted to clarify that, to make sure that's not what we're trying to do here.
I like to know what I sign off on, um, that's kind of the busiest role that I live by in any post, and so that was the spirit of the question. It, in fact, this is, um, re, uh, addressing the outdated code that was presented. Six months ago, and another swing at that to address the majority of outdated code, go crazy, I, you have my support. Um, I just, as a person approving things, I, I like to see what I'm approving, that's all, thank you.
Good, so what I'm looking for is consensus on, uh, is everybody good with me signing this letter as? The council president, um, to support the grant application.
Yeah.
See? Yes, okay. Uh, that's a consensus, so, um, we'll, we'll forward it, thank you, Rowan, I appreciate that, um, and thank you for the tight timeline, I know it was quick. And thanks to Bill and, and Rowan for getting all that over to us, uh, this afternoon. All right, so now to our favorite part of the evening, the city manager report.
No.
Oh, what did I do? Oh, see, this is lying. Well, I told somebody, so I forget. Thank you, all right, so, um, eleven B is the mayor process, um, I wanna make a quick comment and I'll throw it up to the council. Um, personally. Because this is contentious issue and Counselor Page isn't here, it would be my preference as one counselor to. Wait until he's here to speak, but I'll, obviously I'll abide by the will of the council, but I think that it would be disingesting us to not have the full council. Or the full current council to be able to deliberate. But that's my opinion, but I'll leave it to the rest of you on how you wanna do it. My suggestion would be basically to move to unfinished business, but I will leave that to the council. Counselor?
I, I'm fine with moving into unfinished business, I would like to add just a piece of information.
Please.
That, um, the Oregon Public Law, uh, two five four point five seven five is a, basically how to handle tie breaking votes. And for senators, representatives, party offices, or elected public official, it is, if it's a tie, it's decided by lot. So, um, in twenty twenty-four, the state representative for district eight was deciding the coin flip. In twenty sixteen, the state senate district, um, fifteen was decided with the roll of dice. Uh, Sublimity Oregon, use a card, um, and I believe that Oregon, Portland did do the right. Voting, but they had the decide by lot choice if there was a tie. Um, so, I know there's already some questions flying around, but to understand that we talked about. Um, since they were part of the work session, that we talked about, um. How to move forward if we find ourselves in the stalemate position, not to just start off by drawing cards. Thank you, or any other method.
Thank you, anybody else have a comment, or are we good to move this unfinished for next? Yes, counselor, right? I'm moved unfinished, okay, cool. All right, so it's consensus, so Bill, can you please add this to next? Uh, session as unfinished business, so that we can have Counselor Page present. Um, and now.
Okay.
We move to our bigger part of the agenda, sorry about that, uh, city manager report.
Well, right, thank you, Council Delbro, um. Okay, um, so. We will be planning to have an urban renewal agency meeting on the twentieth, the twentieth, um. And, um, Council Delbro and I have been regularly, regularly meeting, um, just to kind of go over things. Ahead of agenda formation, um, and so. Uh, he's been out a lot, I was out a lot over the summer, and we're kind of getting back into a, a pattern. At the last meeting, we discussed, um, he strongly interested in having a URA meeting. I was prepared to put it on for the sixth, but then between this work, set, the work session today and the conversation about it. And then the executive session after the meeting today, um, I just, I hesitated, I apologized to him. I apologize to you, while we don't have it on here, but we'll have it on the, we'll have the, have one on the twentieth. And, um, we'll definitely be talking about the idea that the urban renewal agency has the ability to do different types of. Grants to property owners, businesses, you know, that meet, that, the, the grant or the grant program. Meets the goals of the urban renewal plan and, you know, what we do with the money complies with how the money has to be used by an urban renewal agency. Um, but the bottom line is, I, I kind of wanna, there's been a lot of questions about, um, the Sisters and Stuff business. And, and their ability to get a grant. And I personally have no objections to urban, no professional objections, um, or hesitation. To go through a process of figuring out how to help a business that has. Problems with their property, that investment, physical pro- problems with their property. That, um, an urban renewal agency could help assist with, it's a standard thing that other cities do. But what I wanna make clear is that the only program or policy that we have for doing that, for giving free money, free public money. To businesses or property owners, the only pro- formal program or policy we have has to do with. Extraordinary tenant improvement costs for, for new food service in the city. And so without a program and policy and qualifications and, and the rigor of all of that. Um, when somebody comes to the city and says, can I please have a grant for the difficulties I'm having? Well, then it puts this body as the board for the URA in the difficult situation of case by case. Subjectively saying, sure, you can have one, and then somebody else comes along, we don't have clear criteria, and they would like to ask for a grant. And then, it's just, it's not a good situation to be in, so what I would like to do on the twentieth, if you was the URA board. Is to talk about the beginning of new types of programs. The budget for grants, these types of programs is very generally labeled. It's for property improvement grants, and I believe. The two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars over the biennium, don't quote me on that, I need to go back and look, there are way too many numbers. In all of the budgets for me to remember specifically, but it's written generally. In the budget that there is this money for property improvement grants, not food service tenant improvement grant line item. It, it's, it's generally speaking for grant, the money's for grants for, for property improvement. But we just need to hear from you about priorities for the types of difficulties that businesses or property owners. In the urban renewal agency district have, so that we can kind of come up with some good. Clear standards, qualifications, and any goals. Um, so that we can reliably, in, in a fair and partial manner, award grants, um, for businesses. And Sisters and Stuff might qualify based on what your priorities are. Um, I just wouldn't recommend case by case giving grants when people come to the, this body to ask, is all. Um, so we'll talk about that, we've also been exploring, Rowan, um, has pulled together some really good research. Other cities have grant programs to basically say, hey, um, you have a property and you might wanna expand your business, or you. um, you have a property and you might want to expand your business, or you have a particular obstacle on your property that might require some, um, planning to do something with it. Um, some cities will grant a little bit of money, five thousand dollars or something, um, to help with pre-development costs, firing an engineer or a planner to kind of figure the the improvement to the property out and what the process should be like, or going to the city with the documents and the plan for, you know, for review. That's one idea, uh, you know, we can talk about that more, but anyway, that's what we'll talk about on the twentieth with the Urban Renewal Agency. Um, and then in terms of other things for the U R A to consider, sunset date extension, uh, kind of plan update, we'll discuss those things too, those will require a consultant. And I, the the primary consultant does those statewide. She's a busy, busy lady and I have it nailed it, nailed down the dates for her to show up. Um, but what I would like to do is start with her coming in and giving the U R A, uh, tax increment finance one O one presentation. So that maybe you all can, you know, kind of see a lot of what she presents to other cities and and kind of ask good questions because she'll be the authority, you know, on that. And then we move from there on to next steps, whatever they may be. So we'll get, we'll get to those things. Um, other things to report, I guess I would say the League of Oregon Cities Conference last week. Um, we're all of a sudden in very rapid change at cities utilizing A I and other software, um. And, I mean, uh, Tangent implemented a program with A I that's amazing that just very quickly has made archiving and people being able to go online and ask for records, um, incredibly accessible, quick and easy, fast and cheap and reliable. Um, so we're going to be exploring that, the other thing I will say is that we're at a point where we do want to go out and seek, um, potential new I T cybersecurity services, because of we have the new building and the library moving into the old city hall. Um, and now is the time to find that service that best aligns with how we really should be thinking about implementing some A I um, technology and particularly um, in, you know, whether it's an office with Copilot, with Microsoft, or it's something else. But now's the time to really kind of do both of those things together, so that we're doing it all at the same time, security, I T, and then how, you know, how we can best implement A I, um, or get into it and talk about it and get into it appropriately. Um, beyond that, I spoke a lot, I have a standard question, sorry for going on and on. Um, but it was just a lot of information covered last week.
No, thank you, Bill, appreciate that. Any questions? Counselor?
I'm just worried, it was a six thirty start for the U R A, do we need to make it six o five? Are we gonna have enough time?
Um, that's a great question, Counsel Ray, I, we can, we can talk about that, um, right now on the agenda for the sixteenth is the Agrohoods topic. And I don't know that that needs to be a full hour, I, you know, we can talk about humping it, we can, I mean, things we we can, we can, we can move things around if needed. Um, thirty minutes doesn't sound like it's going to be enough, but we can, we can work on that.
Okay. Anybody else? Counselor?
Yeah, do we have anything at the end of the meeting? We could always extend the meeting if you need to carry over.
Great question, um, Council of Halls, I don't, I don't believe so, at this point, it's great.
So, um, a quick question, can you speak to the, uh, the U R A transferred out um, reference that was made in public comment today regarding, um, a million dollars, I think it was being transferred to the general fund?
Thank you, Council of Halls, um, yeah, I, I mean, without looking at the numbers before me, those numbers seem kind of big. Um, and so what I, what I will say is that the only transfers that the only transfers we do um, from the general fund over to the, excuse me, from the U R A to the general fund are reimbursement for personnel services, um, basically meaning um, the work that different people in different departments do regarding our urban, uh, the property that the Urban Renewal Agency owns, compliance, you know, that sort of thing, so that's the only that's the only transfer or reimburse, it's a reimbursement is what it is for cost per.
Thank you.
And something just to, for the general public to get it on the record, uh, this is all in this, in the budget, this is not receding, this is just a general comment, um. This is all in the budget, so if anybody is interested, uh, we did publish a budget, uh, we published, but great, it's online?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I'm trying to make sure I don't miss that, um, yes, we did publish budget online, so it is all available, available there. Um, or or review there as well, anybody has a deep desire to dig into that. Um, thank you, Bill, appreciate that, and yes, I, we want to get regular U R A board meetings upon a calendar and my personal opinion, I would like to really focus on the policies so that we can give Bill a little bit more guardrails and flexibility, I guess I would say, guidance and flexibility, or if I want to put that, um, so that we can uh, have, be able to give more grants and and do some economic development and support our E D C, um. Uh, I mean, what a committee. Commission. Um, so with that, we're going to go to council reports, and actually, since Counselor Reading, uh, was wanting to bring something up earlier, um, do you mind going first? It's just, I'm trying to get everything on track, so that's why I want to have you do this now.
Do you want me to just reread the statement or just?
Just to summarize, it's fine.
Basically, the term non-resident was used for someone who does have a nine seven one three three zip code. And I know that that's the correct term to be using, it just feels potentially polarizing. Um, and so I was suggesting perhaps rural resident or North Plains area resident outside city limits, but I didn't want to cramp always typing figures of that long of a explanation.
Yeah.
Was it, does anyone have a strong opinion either way?
You need to identify somehow.
Yeah.
Have you need to identify somehow, you know, because the zip code isn't part of the city, so, but now is it about the same people as like someone from Westland or someone from Portland or that, so some way, some way to sort of say, you know, within city limits, outside city limits.
Counselor? That was projected.
As he goes sense.
I do too. I think.
Well, I was, I was chiming off the cuff here, but um, thank you for bringing that up, I think that is a a good call out, um, I don't know if I have a a necessary solution, I want to be part of the solution, not part of the problem here, but, um, I think that might be something for me personally, I need to reflect on and see if we can align on, um, the more universal verbiage for that. But I think that is worth something noting and maybe not in tonight's meeting, but at a future, um, unfinished men, unfinished business section.
Wonder if you want to have that, this is a brief unfinished. Counsel Ready would that answer your?
Yeah, that's fine, it's just really tough when you see Portland resident
No, I, I agree.
and non-resident.
Yeah, so
Like they are, you know.
Can we put that on a unfinished business?
Mm-hmm.
It shouldn't take very long, we just need to come out, we probably want to say it differently. I got you, thank you, anything else, Counsel?
Yes, I was able to attend Clean Water Services Essentials, where I learned the history behind why they were formed, the importance of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit. The basics to wastewater, stormwater and environmental work with the Twelton River watershed, I also got to tour the water quality lab there at Jackson Bottom. And some of the machines are very, very cool, um, if you haven't had the chance to go, there's one that can get as hot as the sun, but also has the pull of the moon. Kind of crazy, um, and these machines are very expensive, but the takeaway is that them owning those machines and being able to do the in-house lab work actually saves us a lot of money. Um, and the, let's see, the biggest takeaway is to realize how lucky, lucky we are to have such, um, safe and clean water. And Clean Water Services is actually the E T A case study for their watershed permit. And, uh, they have it, they have an exceptional compared to historic performance across the country for sewage leaks, uh, meaning they have much less, uh, leaks than the average clean service areas, so that was pretty cool.
And did you get the, uh, homemade fertilizer?
Yeah.
What? Oh, you gotta go back, they give us little packets, I gave my wife, thought it was great. And you got to, sorry. That was from all of us.
I'm trying to think where mine is, I was like, oh, yeah, we got those, um. When, uh, I don't have anything to report, um, I I may not be able to make the council, or sorry, the planning commission meeting on Wednesday, and I was wondering if there's anyone you could cover.
Is that this Wednesday?
Yeah.
Um, I think I can cover.
I can cover, unless you, I mean, if you have a column.
Um, yeah. Either one of us, I can, I might just attempt, because I actually like finding permission, yeah, we'll hang out.
Thank you.
Yeah, and somebody will cover, sorry.
Thank you.
Yes. That's why you're on.
I have three. Um, this week I was at the issue for, or this last, uh, uh,
Weeks, three weeks?
Yeah, three weeks, I was, I had, um, three duties, I attended the library committee, WACA and E D C. And so the library board was on the nineteenth, um, they were, there was a lot of extended discussion about the um, W C C L S work session to kind of talk through the costing model, um, of county. Um, there's a very important, um, to, uh, uh, meeting coming up really October to, um, have this kind of alignment with at the county level on how they're coming up, uh, um, their costing model and how they're re- reswizzling the budget and the funds. And Robin, uh, shared that we got some new hotspots back in circulation, um, the new ones, she got funds from ARPA, they're like eighty dollars a piece compared to like green or bucks a piece, so we're saving a lot of money, so kudos to her for there. Um, we talked about some pop-up events that, um, the library is doing and some great success they're having with these events at the parks. Um, they had two sessions after, um, as of mid, um, September, they had two individual sessions with up to fifty attendees at each session, so that's pretty, um, indicative of some of our, um, uh, uh, potential programming needs in the city, so that's good, um, that's good, uh, feedback and potentially, um, maybe there's continued partnerships. Mister Hatcher, who's here in the audience, he also tasked me with asking the council, sort of a pathway for, um, adding to a future agenda item, a work session to, um, bring in the friends of the North Plains Library. And, um, that was something he had great interest in, they, they would like a future date, because they would like to prep for it, but that's something that I would like to ask the council body.
Seems like a good idea, new directions?
You want me to do that?
Awesome.
So
There you go.
Hence, can we pencil in somewhere in the future, we'd like that, we just, we'll pick a date later.
Mm-hmm, okay, so my second update is with WACA, um, that was nine eighteen, um, prior to this meeting, I had a, like a two-hour tour of the facility, um, it's pretty impressive. Um, they also ha- um, allowed dogs into the office, so let's, uh, you know, I would encourage you to go in there, you need some, um, canine hair, be uh, the, 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 the last weeks or the, the September meeting update was primarily a financial re- report from me, and they kind of did a technical services report on all their, their systems. It wasn't a super heavy lift, but what is interesting is they did a demo of how they're incorporating A I into their, um, operator training. And so they had a really interesting use case that actually was a North Plains example of a woman who called and she was concerned about a cat. It was a real light, um, like, street and everything that they referenced, it was pretty interesting. Um, as well as they had a, a use case or scenario of a person calling from banks. Um, they, uh, Sunset Highway, a bear in the middle, what do I do, that sort of thing, so really, it was, it was really fascinating how, um, the, the voices were very realistic. And they were able to actually engage and 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 train off of it, so it's pretty interesting. They, now, they did say that some of the younger generations, this new A I might not be in alignment because everybody's text messaging savvy, so there are some subtleties that you're missing with the new age ways of communication, so, um, they're kind of doing some brainstorming there. Final update, um, E D C was on the first of the month, um, that was an interesting meeting, they have a lot of momentum going on behind, um, not only there, I also have a homework assignment for you guys on that, but they're doing a lot of marketing campaign planning uh, uh, at a consumer kind of level as well as at a business level, the consumer-facing survey or resident survey, sorry, that's my marketing language. Um, they're, they're looking at doing potential, um, passport programs and and tying it with a holiday in order to drive, um, a lot of, uh, spend visiting in town. So it's like kind of go here for your, you know, X and go there for your Y, and don't forget this for your Z. And it's really a, uh, um, awareness generator and and, um, hopefully, a, a spend booster, um, locally. Their business, um, focused, um, um, marketing campaign, there, there was a lot of ideas going around, but there, what I remember them talking about was education in particular, teaching S and Bs, giving them toolkits on how to, um, do, um, small kind of marketing one-on-one wo- workshops, and there's a lot of discussion, um, partnering with our chamber. Um, and then my final ask here, and here's the homework assignment general, um, the vice chair asked that I announce that, um, they, they have a new survey that they're, they are planning to release um, to the, to our business community, they have a new business email address. And, um, they probably have already released on this. I, I, I don't know, but, um, they were soon to roll this new survey out, but they're working on doing kind of an awareness builder with the broader community verse before they do so, so that's their next big, um, deliverable that they're working on, so they just wanted to read this on that as well too. No asks on that, sorry, that was an important, thank you.
Yes. Counselor.
And this is a tough act to follow, because I haven't had any exercise issues, but this week I'll be attending the Washington County Community Development WACA meeting for policy advice report, and then I'll see the attending as an exercise issue later on in the week, and I will have more to record in our next meeting. And I guess I would just also just throw up there, uh, October sixteenth is literally the cutoff, so start brushing off your, uh, recipes now.
And since Counsel Fager did not appear, if there are hot dogs or ice cream, he will be present, he has told me that on many occasions. Um, so I did not have any exercise, I did meet with Bill, uh, to prep for the, uh, council meeting, so thank you, Bill, the, um, we kind of gave me a heads up on some of the things that were coming, so I was able to at least be somewhat prepared. Um, the one thing, and this is just something I want you all to think about, I, this is not something to make any decisions on today, but I was trying to think about how could we be more, um, how could we give better direction to our boards and commissions, and so one idea is to have whoever, myself or whoever the mayor is, hopefully the mayor, because that'd be better, um, meet with Bill and each of the leaders and do some brainstorming, and then bring it to council, or like, this is what we think, this is, you know, this is a, a proposed budget and kind of work with council, so that way we actually get some forward momentum with the, at least three of the committees slash boards. Um, and the thought there is just to go and take kind of the ideas from council, take the ideas from the boards, kind of try to melt those together and then bring it back to council somewhat distilled and leverage Bill's expertise in a lot of these areas, uh, assuming he's open to this. Um, and this is not a, I'm not saying I'm not looking for consensus today, I just want to plant the seed of this and and kind of have you all think about it and tell me if it makes sense, if it's a bad idea um, or anything, so that, there's something that was, I'm trying to come up with new ways to be more engaged with the board, for us to be more engaging with the board. Counselor? That you have a question?
I like that idea, because I think that would bring a lot of continuity with, um, our, uh, all of our various initiatives and to make sure everything's speaking to each other.
That, that was what I was hoping.
I agree as well, I feel like that, uh, that's a great position for the mayor or council president, so so that, that it's an ongoing, um, relationship will be, as well.
And again, I think we should all do this as exercise, but this was just a, can we get a small group together to kind of do some brainstorming, so that was pretty much it, I'm just trying to come up with some of those things, um, and with that I think that's it, so now, executive session. Uh, or?
Um, I screwed.
Thank you, sweetie.
Yes, I confessed to people who love in your own.
These seem to be quiet, yeah, don't, maybe some people, I'm not, I'm not judging them, they're as loud.
Yeah.
I'd like that.
Our topic. Well, that is the, 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 it's pretty quiet, so we're going to head.
So.
City Council will now the city council will now meet in executive session under O R S one nine two dot six six zero parentheses two parentheses I to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of the chief executive officer who does not request an open hearing. Only news media representatives and staff designated by the city council are permitted to attend the executive session. News media representatives, staff and council members are respectfully directed not to report on any of the discussions that occurred during the session, except to state the general subject as previously announced. The council will return to regular session if there is The council will return to regular session if there is a need for action on the executive session item. No final action or decision may be taken in executive session. Any materials distributed will be collected by the city recorder at the end.
So we're gonna take a very brief recess. Let's, you said for a while. Nine oh five, I'm sorry, nine fifteen and continue with the executive session.